Nice. I feel like I've done this forever. You'll come up, Bill.
You're early warming up.
Huh?
You're early warming up.
Do I need this? Guess they don't want to see the back of my head. Nah, let people see that handsome face.
We all have that same glow back there.
Yeah, I know. Great, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 12th at 6:45. My name is Scott Bugby. To my right is Jeff Palumbo. To my left is Jim Leehan. To Jim's left is our Town Minister Jack Hathaway. I don't know if Marion Harrington will be joining us or not tonight. Want to remind everyone out there, this meeting is being audio and videotaped, consistent with open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be rebroadcast on NCTV government channel and upload online to YouTube. If we can now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jack, would you want to do the honors on the agenda for today?
Certainly. We have Mr. Hawkins in from the Norfolk Lions to talk about their one-day liquor licenses. Scott Bragdon, our HR Director, talk about new Corey policy, report of the warrants, a number of action items, goals and liaisons, the warrant for the November 14th special town meeting, consider authorizing the hiring and funding of a consultant for the ZBA, please consider opening discussion for the public comment on water rates, and consider future use of Kids' Place. An update on the public safety projects, update on the special town meeting warrant and capital items, and an update on the housing production plan and discussion of options for reaching our housing goals.
Wow. Great, thank you. Mr. Hawkins, we'll kick it off with you. What are you doing?
Welcome. Al, I'm the president of the Lions Club, and we meet monthly, with the exception of December. We meet at the Grange Hall, and we have it catered, and we, in the past, have had alcohol and would like to continue to do so. Last year, I think we sorted through the correct way to do that, and I'm back to say, we would like to get the temporary licenses for the months of September, October, November, skip December, January, February, March, April, and May.
Okay. And these, you have catered, so are they also, like, is the bartender tip certified? I mean...
Yes, we do. A woman who works at Basil's and his license comes, and she serves the alcohol.
And I assume all the members are over 21, right? Again, so you could check.
All of the members are, yes.
Okay. I have no question. Just checking in case you get some young Leos, right? Leos might come, right?
Leos rarely come, but if they come, they are not allowed their alcohol. They rarely stay for the whole meeting. They come to a presentation and leave.
Awesome. Questions, gentlemen?
No.
How about a motion to approve?
I move to authorize a one-day liquor license for the Lions, Norfolk Lions, and following dates, September 26th, October 24th, November 28th, January 23rd, February 27th, March 27th, April 24th, and May 22nd.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you very much.
Don't get hurt tonight, buddy.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Scott, you want to... Mr. Bragdon, you're going to join us now with Corey.
Yeah, Marion will get back to you with the official license. Thank you.
So, in your last meeting, you received a copy of a Corey policy, which I'm asking you to approve. I have a very occasional, maybe once or twice a year, the need to run Corey background checks, primarily for people who are doing business at the senior center who go into people's homes. The way the Corey law works is only the person that runs it can see it. So therefore, I can't have somebody else run it for my business. It's like for Carol Green, for the people that do the elections, they're in the schools. So Roxanne runs those because Roxanne needs to see the backgrounds of those individuals. If I ran them, I would only be able to tell her that, you know, what my opinion was. I couldn't share the information with her. In order, by state law, in order for me to run those, I've already signed up on the state website, but in order for me to do that, the town needs to have a policy. So that actually, a policy was taken off the state website as a sample policy that they put out there, and I need to have that in order to do it. I can't have the police run them. They can't share those with me. So, again, it's something, if I ran more than twice a year, I would be surprised, but I do need to, on occasion, run a Corey background check.
Because otherwise, they can't, if you ask someone, like you said, they can only just say pass, fail, or...
Yeah, I can't see the data to know what standards they've used.
Okay.
Just like I couldn't run them for Roxanne because she wouldn't be able to judge whether or not the background was okay based on what I'm telling her.
Okay. Questions?
We didn't have a policy before?
No.
The schools have a policy.
I don't know that.
Well, they run Corey's on every volunteer that comes into the building.
I don't know what their policy is. They do run Corey's on everybody, all the teachers. Teachers are fingerprinted, but...
They've got a written policy. Just do it. I'm sure they do.
You might want to check and make sure they do have a written policy.
Yeah.
Because I know they run a lot of Corey's.
They run it time.
Scott, what does D-C-J-I-S stand for?
I have no idea. I haven't looked at that.
Department of something, maybe, but...
What was the question, Jeff?
Well, it's D-C-J-I-S on the last three.
Oh, on the last page?
It has multiple places it shows up, but I don't see...
I think it's the Criminal Justice Information System. They call it CGIS. I don't know what the D...
Thank you, Jack.
Department of Criminal Justice, probably.
Okay. That's a pretty good guess.
Probably the database that they run the...
Yeah, I never...
Yeah. So, it only, you know, it's very basic information. It's only Massachusetts information, and it's only convictions. Fingerprints that like, that they, excuse me, at the, for the teachers, get a much broader, they get arrests and all kinds of stuff.
When you say it's only Massachusetts information...
Corey's only Massachusetts information.
So would Massachusetts information on a via, on, is there a master database? I thought there was a master database for Corey that was all across the country.
Not on Corey's. Fingerprints will do that. That's why they now run fingerprints for the schools.
That's a problem, because remember they Corey'd a coach, a VP, and he had problems in Rhode Island. They didn't catch it.
And they didn't catch it?
Because it's not master, which it should be, but I don't think it is.
It's not.
State by state almost. I don't know why.
That should, that should be fixed.
But you're limited as to legally you can run.
Yeah, I think that this is something that they've recognized law enforcement agencies where they haven't had that database pulled together in a consistent way throughout the country. So I, I'm not sure, I don't think it's unique to Corey's.
Right. Well, and there's also a train of thought that says that people shouldn't be punished forever for past crimes and should be able to work. You know, I know our previous administrations were very strong on that.
But that's judgmental, and, and, you know, I mean, you know, I coach, and so I'm Corey'd every year. So, I just find that hard to believe, that, that...
If you had a criminal background from another state that not involved Massachusetts in any way...
They wouldn't catch it.
They would not. They had that problem.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger problem. It's a bigger problem.
Yeah, they had that problem with the coach at KP, actually, or somebody at KP.
Yeah.
Remember, a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
He had an issue with Rhode Island.
I didn't know that.
And it wasn't Jim.
Thanks.
Is this some people out there in the audience?
No. I'm grateful for that commercial, Scott. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other further questions, comments? Motion to approve the Corey policy?
So moved.
Second?
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, when I read the agenda, I left off one item because I updated the...
You've got Cheryl Kelly wants to decide that?
On one line, we had Cheryl Kelly to sign the bonds that we recently issued.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Thanks for staying late. It's Jack's fault.
First question, Cheryl. What's the rate?
2.713.
I'll sign it.
And the bonds after what now? What are these bonds for?
For the...
Public safety?
Public safety.
Nice. 2. what was it again?
Seven.
2.7 over...
Yes, treasurer.
Thirty years.
Thirty years, thank you. When can you refinance? Is it 10?
Yes. And we did do some refunding on older debt.
Yep.
We looked at 2003, 2005 to, we looked at that for refunding, and also 2009. The 2009 was a better saving than the 2003 and 5.
Okay.
So, at some point, we can look at the 2003 and 5 again.
What's the rate on 3? It should have been up around probably 4, 4.5, 5?
Yeah, yeah. But because of the $10 million cap on that, if we include the 2003, 5, and 9, we would have gone over that, so...
You picked the best.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have multiple papers for you to sign.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't need a motion or anything like that, just...
Just signatures.
The vote. There's a vote that can be entered into minutes.
Very probable. Do you have that handy?
I do. The clerk has to sign it.
Nice.
Yeah.
And the clerk is here.
And the clerk is here.
Yes, she is.
Clerk is in the building. Gonna start with me?
No.
This is well marked.
Okay. Oh, my goodness gracious. So you're going to hang around for 45 minutes while we sign these?
Yes.
You are? Okay. As I say, take everything out.
Wow.
So any motion, vote? I'm sorry, do we...
Sign the first one, and I'll read it.
Okay.
I'll be done. Here, why don't you take the next one?
Yeah.
Let's see if we can expedite this to a certain degree.
Sorry, folks at home.
Oh, man. Lots of hot signatures here. Is it just the green ones or...
So we're just the greens.
Just the green.
Cheryl, the yellow ones are you? The green are us?
Yes, I have signed.
You here?
Yep. Any of us. And I believe the vote is the solid red tab.
Thank you. It's good to have fingernails.
Cheryl, I did our thing yesterday.
What's that one?
I just passed something a bunch of them down. This is my due diligence.
Go that way. If I go that way.
You get a lot of practice with this stuff, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff's got it.
We actually saved $176,000.
Really?
On the refunding over the...
That's great.
Actually done.
Yeah, that's great.
It's for Jim?
You missed one here, Mr. Palumbo.
All right.
I'm going to blame the clerk.
She didn't see that one yet. You were...
Oh, it hasn't got to me yet?
No, Carol's watching it.
Can we read this while you're, this is the vote?
Yes.
So I can make a...
Thank you.
While you guys are busy.
Just this one spot, Cheryl. That's it.
So I'll read this on behalf of the clerk.
Right under the bus.
I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Norfolk, the town, certify that in meeting of the Board of Held, September 12th, 2017, of which meeting, all members of the Board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in the clerk's custody. Voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority...
S and P.
...to refund on a current basis. The town's $3,476,931 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2009 bonds dated August 15th, 2009, matured on August 15th in each of the years 2013 through 2023, inclusive 2026 and 2029, in the aggregate principal amount of $1,350,000, the refunded bonds. And that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $8,425,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2017 bonds of the town dated September 15th, 2017, the bonds to Hilltop Securities, Inc., at the price of $8,810,562.68, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on August 15th of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2018, $390,000 at 2%. 2019, $345,000 at 2%. 2020, $345,000 at 4%. 2021, $345,000 at 4%. 2022, $345,000 at 4%. 2023, $350,000 at 4%. 2024, $355,000 at 4%. 2025, $360,000 at 4%. 2026, $355,000 at 3%. 2027, $360,000 at 3%. 2028, $350,000 at 3%. 2029, $350,000 at 3%. 2030, $250,000 at 3%. 2031, $250,000 at 3%. 2032, $250,000 at 3%. As is 2033, 34, 35, 36, and 37. 2038, $245,000 at 3%. 2039, $245,000 at 3%. 2041, $485,000 at 3%. 2043, $480,000 at 3%. And 2047, $720,000 at 3.25%. Further voted that the bonds maturing on August 15th, 2041, August 15th, 2043, and August 15th, 2047, each a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. 2040, $245,000. 2041, $240,000. Bond due August 15th, 2043, year 2042 at $240,000. 2043, 2043 at $240,000. And the bond due August 15th, 2047, 2044 at $180,000, as is 2045, 46, and 47. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distributions of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August 29th, 2017, and a final official statement dated September 7th, 2017, the official statement each in such form as may be approved by the Treasurer or the Finance Director be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. That the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement, that the Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure, undertaking, and compliance with SEC rule 15C-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by the reference in bonds and notes as applicable to the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the Treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update the procedures in order to monitor and maintain taxes and status of the bonds and notes. Almost done. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, the finance director, and the Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Mr. Clerk, you also certify that the votes were taken at an open meeting of the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, and time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the option of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or, in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk has located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed as approved by Attorney General, is set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in an executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25, as amended, dated September 12th, 2017. So says the clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
I move to... Yeah, could you repeat that, Jack?
I was busy signing. Could you repeat that?
So moved. Do I have a second? Callers in favor?
Aye.
Yep, those are all fine.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking Mr....
Check them for you, me, and...
Lee and Mr. Clark. My apologies.
I made sure everything was done.
He got promoted, okay. All right, Jack, what's next?
Well, let's be sure we got them. Got them all?
You want to do the warrants?
Wait a minute.
Yeah, these are for you.
Warrants have been signed and reviewed. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You noticed that we've crossed off Mr. Kaliza from the ZBA, the access road. He notified me today that he would like to postpone that discussion for two weeks.
Okay.
The next item was to consider your goals and liaisons, which are in the packet.
Thank you. What is the work? I used to work in that. Jeff, all right, we're going to just consider future use of Kids' Place now.
Yep.
I assume we have interested parties in the audience. I'd love them to stay for our whole meeting, of course. That's a little, a little commercial there, Mr. Henry.
I consider or appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever, 20 bucks an hour, I'm sure it does, right? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carol.
Oh, just for public record, it should be noted that this has, refinancing has saved us about $170,000.
Yes.
And that S and P was in recently and reaffirmed our bond rating.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you for the good work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're pretty confident that we're heading in the right direction with the bond rating, so next year we'll...
It's an understatement.
Well, in the past, I mean, we've done well in the past. But I think even next year, Todd and I, we're talking about how to get it up to the next level.
Thanks.
Based on what I hear, potential of free cash and what we might be able to put into stabilization, I think that will help.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I think you wanted to cut forward to the, we want to talk about...
Kids' Place.
Future use of Kids' Place.
Yes, sir.
I think the Recreation Committee, Recreation Commission has had some discussion about that, and I think Mr. Leehan probably has an update for us.
Well, it is the intent of the Recreation Commission to use Kids' Place, but it is under the control of the Board of Selectmen, so we get the yea or nay on it. But the current thinking is, is that we'd like to make it into a seniors park and connect it to Hillcrest. Put a walkway through to Hillcrest so that the seniors that are living there would have the advantage of using that. We would pave the parking lot and the entrance, and as I say, make it a seniors. Been a lot of discussion, everything from paddleboard courts to dog park to you name it. But I think that we're all in agreement that a seniors park would be the ideal answer for that. So we're going to pursue that with the permission of the Board.
So how would the, you know, the walkway and the paving the parking lot get paid for? I mean, I know those ideas that they brought us...
There are a couple of considerations for that, but with Mr. Kaliza's not here tonight, we'll probably have to table that discussion.
Okay. So, yeah, no, I mean, it seems like a good use for the property. You know, I think location-wise, you know, not only do you have Hillcrest nearby, but, you know, the senior center is not too far, even though, you know, the folks generally have their vehicles at the senior center, so they wouldn't necessarily be walking to it.
It's primarily, we're thinking of Hillcrest.
Yeah.
Because they really don't have any green space out there. I mean, they've got a little circle in the middle and a little bit around the house, if you will, but there's really nowhere to go. So if we put a path through there, because our property connects, it could be very useful for them. A nice, quiet setting.
Would it be open to non-seniors?
It's a town facility.
I just didn't know. When you say like over 55, you know, and so it's open to anyone.
There were some interesting suggestions for naming it, but I'll defer that. Thing is, I'm considered a senior. I think I took offense to a couple of them.
Not Grandpa's Place instead of Kids' Place?
Worse, worse. But it was done in good humor. But we think that would be a good use for it.
So you're thinking like benches, places to, like, checkers? I mean, is that, I mean...
Chess, too. How do they have chess boards like Central Park?
Thank you for not saying bingo. I appreciate that.
In Central Park, they have the chess boys. They can play chess.
The... Sure. I mean, those are all great ideas. I think what we were looking for tonight is a vote from this board to agree, you know, to authorize us to pursue that. And that's because we are, we control the property.
So in terms of parking spaces, no more, maybe no less than what was there for Kids' Place? I mean, it's basically...
That's the intent.
Yeah.
Except we would pave it. The intent would be to pave it.
Yeah. For trip hazards and, I assume for trip hazards and all that.
Yeah.
And ADA, too. So we give the authority, that's all that's needed, Jack? I mean, do I just have to go to vote anywhere else? I mean, this is the chair of town property.
We own it.
Okay. Great. You guys, questions, comments? I don't either yet. I'm getting there. I'm trying to get, we need a microphone. Yeah, just take a microphone. Make sure the green light's on. It's not for us, obviously. It's for your, it's for your wife at home. Somebody at home. I don't know what's involved in a senior park, but it sounds like a nice idea to me, actually, so.
Are we not quite sure what it will look like, but its intent is to be a quiet place? We're not putting in senior playgrounds. I don't even know what that would be. But benches, tables, perhaps chessboard, I don't, we don't know. The design components of that, this is initial only to authorize Recreation to pursue it. Yep. We think it's a good use, and where it connects to Hillcrest, I think they could certainly take advantage of it. That would be a good thing. Now, I know, I know you, I know there are concerns over 25 Rockwood, and, you know, that's a different discussion for a different day because Mr. Kaliza's not here. But this, this purpose is exclusively for a park. It is not for connectivity or anything of that nature. We're going to use Kids' Place, one way or the other. And so we, we thought this was the less, certainly not intrusive. It's quiet. It's better than...
I love it over a dog park. No one's arguing. I know Scott loves dogs.
Yeah, nobody's objecting to the use of Kids' Place. It's giving away the, the town's property to a private developer that, that I took offense to, and that's what I was objecting to. Not the use of Kids' Place. I think it's a, that's part of the reason I bought my home, was that Kids' Place was right next door. I have a young family. I was disappointed to see it move. I think that the new playground is wonderful. I love it. I'm happy to hear that something is going back to Kids' Place. Does feel like there's a bit of an alternate agenda here. Maybe not, but it does feel like there's a bit of an alternate agenda here. But I look forward to hearing the discussions. Is there an intent? If, I mean, it would seem logical that we'd want to connect the senior housing to the senior playground to the senior center. And presently, there's a sidewalk that stops 600 feet short of the senior center. I know this is a topic that I've brought up numerous times. I'd really like to see some connectivity between that, not only for the senior center, but one of the largest neighborhoods in Norfolk, Cape Cod Estates, is cut off from the downtown. All of these discussions have been around bringing people to the downtown. We don't provide a sidewalk. We don't have a way for people to get there.
You, I'm speaking only for me. You get no argument from me. But I will just go back a little bit in ancient history. We developed a very thorough strategic plan for doing just that, connecting all the sidewalks throughout town. It was an 11-year plan. I think Joe Sebastiano was the gentleman that chaired that. We presented it to town meeting. It required a $50,000 a year override that would be dedicated exclusively to paying for this project that would connect it all, and the voters voted it down.
What year was that?
I'm going to say, well, within the last 10 years.
Seven or eight, yeah.
Seven or eight years ago. It was a well-designed plan. Now, the cost of that probably would be double today.
Yeah.
But we completely agree. We brought it forward. Town meeting approved it. The voters voted it down.
It just seems like such a short stretch that maybe the DPW takes it on themselves.
Well, we have limited funds, you know, although we've put more this year than ever. I think over $900,000 into roads and sidewalks.
This does seem as if this is the best financial timing that we've had in years, so strike while the iron is hot.
Yeah, but we, there's a long list, you know, of where this needs to be. Boardman's Street down the other side, down by the school, King Street, up by the middle school, which we've been working on. So, it's a long, long list, and, and we can't get to it all. So that is on the list. I can tell you that. But when, it's up to, you know, we rely on Mr. McGee to tell us where he thinks the priorities are. And, I mean, one we're working on now, as you know, probably you've seen it, right here on 115, where the sidewalk was literally level with the, with the road on a sharp corner. That's, that's just an accident looking for a place to happen. That's, that's just an accident looking for a place to happen. And so, that rose to the top of the list, and we're fixing that. So, we're getting as much done, but we put an extra $200,000 this year, in addition to the Chapter 90 funds, into roads.
Just Boardman Street with the traffic from the transfer station on Saturdays is a busy road.
Yep.
I know my kids, I'm nervous when they try and make the ride down, because it's just that short little stretch where all of a sudden, the sidewalk just comes to an end.
Yep. It's on the list.
Yep.
Walk my dog down there. Yeah, exactly. Go for the curb.
We know, you know, yeah.
In terms of your other question, just as an aside, you know, Mr. Kaliza's not here. I do not know what he's gonna, I honestly do not know what he's gonna request, if anything, of us, but I'm sure he'll be here for it, and we'll deal with it at that time. But this, this has been a discussion point with Recreation for a better part of a year.
This is the first, I've watched all of those meetings, all those, I heard the pickle board, I heard pickleball court, which I was in favor of.
Dog park?
You've probably heard the dog park, because I brought that up. Yeah, I've heard, I've heard several.
Yep.
Never once did I hear the senior playground.
We discussed, it was a rec. meeting last night, which ironically was not on TV.
Last night?
Yep.
That's, wow. That's short. So, this just came out of nowhere?
No, didn't come out of nowhere. It's been, I resent that.
Well, I just...
With all due respect, I resent that.
Last night?
Nobody's hiding anything. Nobody.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And for you to imply that's unfair. The rec. meeting is a public meeting. It's posted. You could have attended last night.
Was it televised?
No, it was not.
Okay.
No, it was not, and I don't know why. I'm not the chair. I don't know why it wasn't televised.
Okay.
But I can tell you, it wasn't with any intent.
It never is.
I think that's enough.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, at least, you know.
No, I'm agreeing with you. It never is, right.
Okay. What else? Done with that? We can, oh, so we need a vote then? Till our...
I would appreciate it.
I'll take a motion.
So, I mean, help me with the motion, Jack, for something like this. Just a simple use.
At this point, vote to authorize the Recreation Commission to come back with a plan for a senior park at...
To work.
Place formerly known as Kids Place.
So moved.
Can we say to authorize the Recreation Board to pursue the development of a senior park? Do you want this board to approve its design? Or would you leave that to Recreation?
It's up to you.
I don't have a bias, one way or the other.
I think you want, probably want them to come up with the...
I'd like to see the design. I think, maybe not the micromanage.
Doesn't matter to me.
Just I think like we did with the new...
I don't think it matters to the board either. I don't think they really care. I mean, we kicked around a bunch of different ideas last night, and, you know, some of them were reasonable, some of them were kind of fun.
At the end of the day, the two boards are gonna want to put their head together and say, this is what we want, so I don't...
Yep.
And that way, it gives the public input, too, if they want to come back to the meeting and say, you know, we don't like pickleboard courts, I want checkers instead of chess. I mean, not that we can go down that level.
Yeah, I agree. Vigilance motion's been made.
A second?
So, yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there... Probably should have asked this first. Is there...
Kick the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. Just, again, at home, it's frustrating if you're watching, trying to hear what people say.
Is there a timeframe for the, or like a funding source? Is it something that you would need to go and ask for? Town meeting?
Yeah, if we're evolving any of your tax paid dollars, it would have to go through town meeting, so there's different avenues. I think what Mr. Leehan was mentioning, you have CPC, you could do some stuff. You could get some mitigation money from 25 Rockwood, so, but anytime we're spending any of your money, our money, it would have to go through, you know, first a town meeting, and perhaps a ballot, I don't know, you know, but definitely town meeting for sure, where they, you know, they could weigh in on. Again, if the voters don't want that, that's fine, too. I mean, that's their prerogative.
We talked about three sources last night.
Okay.
There are grants for these types of things.
Yeah.
And Recreation's been pretty successful at getting a number of grants, so we're gonna pursue grants. One of the committee members has agreed to pursue that. We've looked at current revenue sources within the rec. department and how we might raise additional funds associated with that. We've got, I think, close to 1,100 kids now involved in the rec. program.
I love our rec. program, just for, for the rec. program.
Anne does a wonderful job.
She does.
So, there's an opportunity to gain a little bit of revenue there.
Yeah.
Could be a budgeted item through this town, which wouldn't require an override, but would be a budgeted item and be part of the presentation in Springtown Meeting.
And I think...
And could be fundraising. I mean, you know, we don't anticipate it to be a heavy expense.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's not a lot, and you don't have to fence it in, you know, I don't have to lock the folks in.
Might want to, but we don't have to.
The Lions, you know, the Lions have frequently volunteered to do paths.
Or the Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, yeah. Another good idea.
That would be my, Peter O'Neill would be a great person.
Really, the only expense is gonna be the paving.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have contracts for that with, through DPW that are very competitively positioned that we can do, so I don't know what a price estimate would be, but I don't think it's gonna be real high.
Yep.
It may be something that could just be absorbed in the budget of rec.
And you also have the friends of the seniors, what is it called? What's that? They have, they have...
Oh, the seniors?
Yeah. Yeah, friends of the, friends of seniors, they, just like, we used to have friends for the coast.
We're all friends of seniors.
Yeah, we're all friends, but they have, they have quite of, you know, some money, too. Again, since it's a senior park, doesn't mean anyone else can't go there. I would think they'd be in favor, too, and would want to contribute, hopefully.
Rec. can't pursue this without the approval of this board, because this board controls the property.
They pay for it out of the, themselves without going before the town meeting, though?
If it's in their budget.
If they have the funds, yeah.
They could, yeah.
Just like they go, like, they do a field if they want, you know, they don't have the money for a turf field, but if they want to reseed a field, to resaw the field, because I was on the rec. board like Jim for a number of years, if, you know, in the revolving account, if the money's there, yes. If they ever wanted to do something outside that, you know, if they have self-funding, if they have, if they have the cash to do that, they can do that.
Rec. pays DPW, for example, to do a lot of work down at Pond Street, which isn't something that has to be approved by the voters. It's out of their resources, out of their funds. I don't know how much it would cost to pave that entrance and parking lot, but it's not that big. I don't think it holds, I would, taking a wild guess, 10 cars?
At most, yeah.
At most? And I don't think there're gonna be a lot of cars in there. You know, I think most of the folks that use it will come from Hillcrest, and the leach fields, part of the leach fields are on that property, anyway.
Yeah.
It's not big enough to build on. There's no frontage. We are sensitive to the neighbors, you know, we talked, you've heard conversations, you said, about paddleboard courts or what, pickleboards, excuse me.
Pickleball.
Pickleboard, which I think would be great, because I think that's a great sport.
Chris wanted the pickleball.
You'd be in favor of that, too?
Yeah, he liked that, I guess.
I don't know if the seniors would go for that.
Seniors could play pickleball.
And it's also paddleball, too, they play in the winters. That's even better.
The reason we kind of table that is, that's more expensive.
Yeah.
You know, they're not cheap to build, and we'd have to find sources of funds to do that. This, and you could always still do it.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you're not doing any major changes to the property. It's just a parking lot, so it could, at some point in the future, serve another purpose.
Ice rig? Ice rig?
Yeah. So, we thought it was a good thing to do, and...
I like the senior. It gives them an opportunity.
Well, Hillcrest, have you, you've been up in Hillcrest?
Oh, yeah.
You know they have very little green space. They really don't have anywhere to go.
Right.
Unless they just walk around the circle, and...
Would the paving connect to the Hillcrest?
No.
Just to that grass opening?
The thought was, I mean, the Hillcrest connection is actually to the left. It's not to the right. The thought was to put a pathway, not, not a driveway, a pathway, that was handicap accessible, because there are folks up there that would need that.
Mm-hmm.
That was the thought process. It wasn't a driveway. Whether it's paved or not, I don't, nobody's given any thought to that, but it wasn't thought of that it was going to be a road or driveway, let me say driveway. It was thought of as a path. More for, I mean, it's, couldn't be...
A walking path.
Yeah, couldn't be more than 50 feet. I mean, it's, it's very close.
It's kind of cut out now, I walked into the train, right?
Yeah.
I see Hillcrest when I go towards the train on my left. There's a little opening there, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Grass. I mean, it'd be nice to make it a little bit, well, I don't want to say formal, but nicer.
Like a pathway.
I'm just concerned, because that was Mr. Kaliza's path for his access road.
Right.
At the, at the last meeting was, that's exactly what he showed, was coming through Kids Place, making the turn, and connecting to Fisher's property. So, this felt a little like this was the path.
But I appreciate that there's a vision, right? That knowing, what are we gonna do with this piece of property that we have?
There's no connectivity in rec.'s mind. I'll speak for that. There's no connectivity between that recommendation and Mr. Kaliza's project. So, you know, if we could get somebody else to pay for it, I'd be all for it. You know, I'm, but, we have no say in that.
Do we know when that agenda item, because I thought that was, which is why we have a babysitter.
Yeah, no, he, Jack left it to him.
Mr. Kaliza sent me an email this afternoon, asked to meet in two weeks, so that would be on the 26th.
The 26th, okay.
I thought he was gonna be here, too.
Yeah.
It's the second time it's been pulled from the agenda, so it's just, it's tough as a family to try and coordinate, but I mean, you appreciate, you come to these meetings, so...
It's not pulled by us.
No, I read you max that. It's just difficult, this, you know.
It's pure babysitting, come down. We bring the kids, they must be quiet, right?
We could try that.
I've seen them playing Friday night.
You met our kids?
Yeah.
We've had kids.
They're not quiet.
Yeah, we, we didn't, believe me, we didn't pull it.
The seniors might be like, we're not going there, then, they're too loud.
They can come visit as long as they go home. Yeah. That's like grandkids, right? Yeah. And nieces and nephews.
Believe me, I understand the sensitivity of your issue, but we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. I understand why you might suspect this connectivity. I don't think you've ever heard anything in this board that wasn't transparent, and...
I mean, I think this discussion with 25 Rockwood has inspired rec. and us to start thinking about it again, so I'm not... I think there's connectivity in that sense, but...
I mean, that property...
I do not think there's an, I, I'm not aware of an alternative motive that you preplain, implied.
It seems like a way to get that paid for, that's all.
I'm just looking for transparency...
If he wants to write us a check, I'll take it.
And a vision, right? That's, those are the things I'd ask.
And he doesn't get town property, so he doesn't, you know, even if he did any action, and you always talk about giving away town property to private developers, it'd always be our, it would always be your property.
I will not, I will not rescind my...
It would never be the, out of the ownership of a private person or entity?
I personally will not rescind my comment that I made, that you have reminded me of correctly. And rightfully so, that I will never vote to allow a developer to have control of town land. Okay? That vote will not change.
But if we, so just so, for my own clarification, if the town says to Fisher, we're going to ask you to provide this emergency access road to make your development safer, we are, we're doing that. I mean, we're not giving him the land, but we're giving him the right, and the argument in that 2013 meeting that I bring up over and over again, from both Mr. Bugby, Mr. Leehan, Mr. Garrity, who is no longer here, and Mr. Hathaway, were, that encumbers the town on what they can do with that property in the future. So, while the senior project is the plan of today, moving forward, none of us know, not this board, not other boards moving forward, none of us know what the future use of that site is or may be, and when we give that right to a developer that we're going to grant you this easement, that encumbers the town on what they can do with that property moving forward. And the discussion in that meeting was, was saying that, that that was a decision that had to go before...
Had to do that.
Town meeting. And now it sounds like that doesn't have to go before town meeting. So, I'm just confused about the process. You say about the transparency, when I ask the questions, it's like I'm out of line.
Fair, fair question. No, I didn't say that. I just, it's, I don't want you, I don't think it's fair to imply that there's an agenda I don't think it's fair to imply that there's an agenda other than what you're hearing. I don't know what Mr. Kaliza is going to ask for. I do not know. I know I've watched every meeting, just as you have. Not physically there, but I haven't missed one. It's entertaining. Better than some of the cable shows.
I apologize.
I understand the dilemma. I understand the dilemma. I personally would not support providing or encumbering town land to the benefit of builder. I've said that publicly. I'm saying it again. I will not vote to support that. If there's a way that that can be done that does not allow that to happen, that's a different discussion that I have not heard. I know of no alternative to that. But if there is a way, we'll entertain it. I would entertain it. But I am not going to... I would not support... These two gentlemen can. But I will not vote to allow or encumber town land for that very reason.
So I ask another question in that vein. If they call it a floating easement, where's...
I'm not in favor of any easement that encumbers our ability to use that land.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we'd have to get our town council to craft something that... I don't want to say gives us an out, but there's got to be a way... You know, we'll find a way before we support doing that where we can get it back. You know what I mean? Like you said, if something comes up that they strike oil on Kids Place, it becomes the most valuable resource we have in town, we want it. And we're about to do what we want with it.
Let me give you... And this is just... I'm thinking out loud here. And it just popped into my head. If we abutted your property and for some reason we wanted to do something, we have the ability to go right up to your property line. Right? Now, what... And let's say we wanted to put a driveway up to your property line. We have a right to do that.
You have.
Well, but... Okay, so we have the right to do that. Now, what you do on your property on your side is your business. You can do whatever you want.
Well, I take the approach that I'm part owner of that property on the other side as well.
But you're not.
Well, I'm a member of the town in Norfolk.
But if we... But if you still...
We own it as a collective.
But if you still own it as a collective, you haven't encumbered it, you haven't given use of it to anyone, it's our property. Just like the parking lot in Kids Place. How would that be different?
Let's wait. I mean, we got to like...
Yeah, I mean, I want to reserve my comments, but I see this as being more straightforward than I think than it seems to be based on this conversation. But I want to withhold my comments until, you know, we have our meeting. Now, you know, that meeting, I know we talked about the 26th. I'm not able to make the 26th. I don't know whether or not the board, the chair, would entertain the 28th. I'll be able to... I'll be back in town on Thursday, the 28th. But I'll defer to the chair as to whether or not that's...
As long as Mr. Kaliza...
You know, I think we have a few items of business that it might behoove the board to have me present for that meeting.
I could do the 28th.
It's Thursday, right?
Thursday, 28th.
Is it... I know you've got Mr. Brogan coming in. You've got the...
I mean, just... I mean, and to your point...
Is that all going to work?
I mean, I'm sure you recall, as a member of the planning board, that...
Anything else?
This topic came up in a slightly different vein, but it was also a point of discussion, as I'm sure you recall, and I do as well.
06, 108, you mean?
Uh, no.
Oh.
No, that property, which is the subject of this discussion. Yeah, the 25 Rockwood.
Okay. But yeah, it was on the original proposal, yes?
Regarding the zoning, recall?
Yes.
Yeah. So I haven't forgotten that conversation either. I mean, like Mr. Leahan said, I mean, we try to, you know, think through these things as clearly as possible and anticipate. And I don't know that my feelings have changed, you know, regarding that, so...
I appreciate it. My question is, has the opinion changed that it needs to go to town meeting if you decide you want to grant that access with easement, whatever we're going to call it?
I don't know. It wouldn't never... It would never be like an opinion. It would be with legal, you know, what I... At least the way I look at it, I defer to what a legal council says. Whatever the procedure is, if it's a board vote only or a town meeting vote, you know, board vote then followed by town meeting and about... Whatever that would be, you know what I mean? So whatever town council... That's the way I look at it. I don't know if someone else has a different opinion, but, you know, I defer to town council. What is the legal right way to do this?
In 2013, the answer from Mr. Hathaway was that the town council or the... Had advised him that that didn't require that. Has that changed?
We've got different town council now. So the...
Sometimes a few.
So town council has recently advised Mr. Kaliza, and I've seen some of that communication, that the selectmen could offer a temporary license for somebody to use a piece of town property. But if it was going to become a permanent, you know, deed-recorded use of the property, then it would have to go to town meeting. So if it was only temporary, then a future board of selectmen could just reverse it with... At their discretion.
A temporary in perpetuity or a temporary with an end date?
I think it would be the annual or, you know, again...
It could be annual or annual, but I don't know. We've never done that.
No, well, I don't know. My... Again, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding was temporary until reversed, if you will. So in perpetuity, if you... But again, it's at the whim of a future selectman, a board of selectmen to reverse that.
Which means if something better comes up, we use that approach.
Let's wait for Mr. Kaliza to come in, see what he has to say and see what his options are.
I appreciate the respect that the board gives us, and I try and give it back. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
No, no. And I don't think I can make where I stand on it any clearer.
But we appreciate that. It's just, you know, as we all did, we moved to this town to... And purchased our properties based on what we thought existed there, so we're just trying to figure out...
I think a senior park will be better.
I love the senior park.
Yeah, there you go.
Unless, of course, they all have dogs.
That'd be okay, just...
They have dogs. Their dog just likes to bark.
You have dogs?
Their dog just barks. Yeah, they have dogs.
There's this terrible dog at 30 Boardman Street that just barks at everybody that goes by. So as a member of the community, can we join the recreation meetings and listen to the design ideas and ad ideas?
Public meetings, sure.
We never had. Only... Only time we ever had anyone come was when we used to do the field allocation. But we're all... Again, I was on it for four years before Jim, and we, you know, it was videotaped, or at least videotaped, but no one ever came unless it was time to do field allocation for your son or daughter's soccer, you know, Lions, and that was the biggest...
Attendance.
I want to say, yeah. It was not controversial, biggest attendance, because... And they shuffled off. But you're always welcome. And Ian loves, you know, letters. I don't know what she reads them, but...
The next meeting is... They're always on Monday nights.
Okay.
And...
Can we get that calendar thing where it notifies us?
It's posted.
Yeah, do the same thing you do for these meetings. Same, because I still get notified of those.
I believe it is...
But it's on that... You know, when you go on now, and you just click to get notified.
And will that be the next meeting that they'll be discussing that?
The agenda will come out?
Yeah.
I would be very surprised if there's any discussion on, you know, other than just an informational update that says that the board of selectmen has authorized this to be pursued. And I... Maybe there'll be some discussion, but I doubt it, to be honest with you. It's not going to be the 9th, because I think that's the holiday, if I remember.
But it's online.
I didn't have my calendar with me when we set it last night, and I can't do the 16th, so perhaps it might be the 17th, which is a Tuesday.
All right. Well, we'll sign up for the...
But it'll be posted.
I've got a ton of ideas.
Well, I...
I'm full of ideas.
They're always looking for members, too, so they...
I would... You know, it'd be real easy for me to say... I don't have any. So if you've got ideas on how to design it, believe me...
Yeah, and putting seniors and kids together, as long as we got some Corey checks, can be really therapeutic.
Is it choice for the kids or the seniors?
It's Corey for the kids.
It's a choice for the kids or the seniors?
Let's hope our kids here in Norfolk don't need Corey's just yet.
That would be great. Come to the meeting.
I will.
But I don't... Again, I don't know that there'll be any... I don't know if there'll be any discussion or not on it.
Just pop in and talk to Anne.
But look at the agenda. The agenda's posted.
Okay, great.
Or you can just pop in and see Anne and Kathy.
And Kids Place was on the agenda in last night's meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I don't...
Nobody...
There was a few good Rec meetings back in the day, but...
Already did that. Yeah, we did before the warrants. And we've done Kids Place, and there were Goals and Liaisons. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now, I'm sorry you came in unexpected. We didn't know.
Okay. We'll be here the next time.
Okay.
You'll be ready, I'm sure.
We're always ready.
We're going to listen just as you are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night.
There goes our crowd, okay?
I know.
So we have our Goals and Liaisons. So you want to do Liaisons first, gentlemen? I don't know if we... Do we have voice trading? Do we have any... It's on the last page of the packet.
We'll start over here, because Mary was down the first 21.
Okay, we'll do... Why don't we read that whole bond?
Can you read that?
That bond dissertation. You can read the bond dissertation, Jack. Thank you. As long as it's not like a PhD.
I wish Mike had been here tonight, so that there wouldn't be this feeling that there's...
It keeps moving, yeah. They can ask him tomorrow. He has a meeting tomorrow night. They haven't resolved whatever it is.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, looking at your liaisons. Anybody want to trade? Anyone want to keep the same? I'm fine with what I have, but I'll probably trade.
Somebody wants to steal something.
I like to keep things simple, but Jeff, if you want to... Are you happy with it yet?
I think it's fine.
Working out of it. No complaints of anyone. I know I do hear some complaints about Jeff not being there when they want to be, but...
I'm just picking on Jeff's side. Mary wasn't here.
Boy, you are.
I'm just teasing. Jeff probably goes to more meetings than I do on the Liaisons side, so we'll keep those the same. Mary? Okay.
What are... Goals?
I'm with you, pal, over there.
You give them the chairmanship, and look what happens.
I know, exactly.
Created a monster.
It's fleeting, Jeff. It's fleeting, right?
Because this meeting's already over now.
Yeah, exactly. Longer than I promised Jim that it would be tonight, but...
You gotta promise me that.
I didn't say anything about tonight. I knew tonight we'd have to do some work. So goals, guys. So bring plans forward to the town for new state assets. Hey, we accomplished that. That was on 2017. And update the public safety, which we houseify, we did that. You made a comment. Have we all still online, Jack? Were we dealt dispatch opening fiscal 2018?
No. The plan is... The building will be turned over to us on July 1st, 2018, so that'll actually be fiscal '19.
So you want to ask us to slide that little goal? Yeah. That's now going to be a penalty.
From a regional dispatch point of view, if you had gotten your police station built on time, then...
So that was... No, we were just bringing plans forward, by the way.
Well, I mean, to me, the police and the public safety and the dispatch now pretty much fall off our priority list. It's out of our control now. It's part of the permanent... It's part of the building committee.
Right.
I mean, monitor or something is fine, but I don't see that as our goal anymore. Clearly, I see number three. That never goes away. I would like to strengthen up the fourth bullet, which is capital budgets for spring on town meeting. I'd like to continue to work on a more of a longer-term capital plan. I know you guys have done that.
Yeah, I think they have like a five-year term.
I would agree, 100%.
But I'd like to bring it all together. I think what we've got is four or five different capital plans that need to be merged into one capital plan. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
I changed number four a little bit to say to continue to work on the identified water source and, you know, continue the permitting... I mean, we have a source now.
Yep.
And so it's not identifying anymore. It's getting the darn thing permitted.
Yeah. So I'm sorry. Are we not then, we don't want to continue in 2018 to look for...
Oh, and continue to look for new sources.
I think we're always out there hunting for wells.
Okay, well said. Well said.
I would think. I know we...
We definitely need a fourth source.
So it's an A and a B?
Yeah.
A good point. Thank you.
I just think, you know, yeah, we can never have too many, because...
Continue development of the...
Yeah, well, I would say on number five, I would say it's even beyond now. I think we've gone further. I would say would be to submit a housing production plan to the state and have it fully certified prior to year end.
That's not even fiscal '20. Is that fiscal '21? Yeah.
Yep.
Fiscal 2018.
That's just my thought.
I think he's... But he's saying by calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
Calendar.
And as soon as possible. And I know they're doing a great job. They're almost there.
I also thought we should have something in there about working with King Philip on their budgeting process and to help them develop realistic budgets that are acceptable, I guess. I don't know how...
I think whoever is liaison to King Philip should take that one and run with it.
Thank you very much. I'm trying.
If he has volunteered for everything that I've asked him to do, he said yes to everything we've asked him to do, so...
We've got to... And then I add in here, work with ZBA in whatever capacity we can to help them work through these 40B projects where feasible. I mean, there are some things we can do, some things we can't do. But where there are chances to help them, I think we should help them. Those are just my thoughts. You guys jump in.
So, I mean, six at this point, you know, we're beyond...
Yeah, I cross six out.
Correct you to six. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
And one is out. And I took one, two, and six out. And I changed five to... We're not trying to build it now. We're trying to get it certified. I mean, the plan right now is for it to come before this board and the planning board on October 10th. Joint meeting for a vote. If it is voted that day, it will be submitted electronically to the state on the 11th. The clock starts that day. So... And our consultant is not just a 300 hitter, she's a 1,000 hitter. So she knows how to word it, how to frame it, what the state wants. She has already submitted a preliminary draft to the state for feedback. I mean, she's good.
We're going to see her Thursday.
Yes, you are. Well, she's doing another one of the public forums on Thursday. We will have a draft of this the last week of September. You will have the plan, so that everybody in the planning board and board of selectmen will see the plan prior to the meeting of the 10th. And then hopefully, the two boards will vote it. And remember, there are things in there that may not make sense, but we can't tweak because the state requires it.
Yeah, yeah.
And she knows that we don't, so... Yeah. So if it's in on October 11th, then we're... It'll get interesting. So that's the plan as it stands now. She's done terrific work. It's an interesting process.
Appreciate all the hard work. Everyone's done, because it's much needed and it's going to be, hopefully, a great help. Consider closing the warrants, Jack, for special time meeting?
Oh, sorry. You jumped ahead on me.
I was going to go right down line.
No, no. I was still thinking about the goals. I was just...
Oh, you have something to add?
Well, I was just on the... I was just going to say on the fiscal responsibility, if we just added another bullet there to just work with the public safety committees to complete the public safety projects within budget.
Sure.
Just so we still capture those a little bit, because...
And did you expand the capital one?
Yeah, happy to expand that. Oh, and so capital will be its own... Oh, as another bullet underneath that?
Well, you've got a budget... You've got a capital budget for spring ATM.
Yeah, right.
I was changing that to merge the departmental capital budgets into one master capital plan. So that we can begin to prioritize between departments. And then under four, it's to continue the permitting process on the identified source and to continue to look for new sources. And then five was get the plan voted, submitted, certified by year end. And then how do you guys feel about the one, working with ZBA to assist them in managing 40B projects where feasible?
It's an always been a goal, yeah. I mean, again, I don't like to interfere or step on toes, but I mean, whenever we can add... Whenever we can add value, I'm all for that.
And then...
Work with KP.
Work with KP on their budgeting process.
That's all right.
That's the hardest one.
That's the challenge. They're all there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, the reference to the ZBA, is it broader than that? Is it planning in a more general sense? Because I know that's been a challenge in terms of, you know, identifying a planner, in-house planner.
Well, I think you're just talking about work with all the land use boards for all of their challenges? Is that what you mean?
I mean, I'm just wondering, is ZBA being a little bit too narrow in terms of that aspect of it versus, you know, the importance of planning? Well, just any planning.
Yeah, I was just thinking specifically of 40Bs.
He had it on just as 40Bs.
I was just thinking of the 40Bs.
I mean, that's certainly the highest priority, but, you know, we were making some good headway with our in-house planner, and then, you know, we kind of had some difficulty here getting that momentum back.
18th, I think.
18th. 18th. We'll have a pool of resumes from our headhunter.
Okay, good.
But, I mean, it's fine. I mean, you're right, Jim. I mean, that's the priority of ZBA, but do we want to capture just planning in general?
I guess I was narrowly focused on that, Jeff. I wasn't thinking about a term. And I wasn't thinking in the planner. I was thinking just if there are opportunities where this board might be able to help mediate any... And I don't know what it would be.
Yeah.
But if there are opportunities where we can mediate considerations with some of the developers in behalf of the ZBA, that we have the authority to do that.
More of a...
That would be a good thing.
Don't mean this in a negative way, but more reactionary as opposed to, you know, the planning, the upfront.
Oh, absolutely.
You're saying just react to... Because there's a certain amount of that that's just unavoidable.
If there's a roadblock and we can help mitigate the roadblock, that would be...
Right, okay. I mean, that's fine.
That's basically what I'm saying.
That's fine.
And I don't know what that would be. I mean, the only thing we've been able to do now is give them really money for consultants.
Yeah.
That's really about the only thing we've been able to help them with. Other than feedback, you know, sounding board or whatever.
Yeah, they got a lot on their plates, for sure. All right. So where do you want to go?
I mean, this is what I was...
No, no, I'm fine with it.
I mean, what do you guys think?
I think it's perfect. I mean, I guess that they don't see it.
So Mary and I will try and put that together, and then we can... So, Mary and I will try and put that together and then we can.
Good luck.
She pays more attention than I do.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Those are great ideas.
So, I, we have a rough draft, rough, rough draft of the Fall Town Meeting.
Rough, rough?
Rough, rough. Should we vote to close the warrant first?
Yeah, you can, and then you can always, well, unless there's something you want to throw off in here.
Okay.
So, don't forget to close.
Let me just focus, like, what's not boilerplate?
All right, so, first one is boilerplate, second is just, first one is just transfers, the second one is prior year bills, third one is capital, and I just put on there that, you know, this wouldn't end up in the warrant, but the clerk is looking for some voting machines, we'll have some vehicles to talk about, Matt has some facility needs, not new buildings, but maintenance of the buildings, but major costs, particularly the H. All Day school roof. So, those are, those are at a very high level where we'll be going for capital issue. You have the committee reports, you have a, with the Municipal Modernization Act, you have a couple of articles here that allow us to take advantage of some improvements to the law with the treasurer, allows us to collect on things and then to hold back on permits more efficiently than we currently are. The one in the middle of the page on the next is, again, it's a draft, but we've got a request to accept some roads that are currently being, I think they're supposed to be paved next week, and we'll have to go through a planning board process and you'll have to accept the layout of the roads, et cetera. We've got the town clerk has submitted a request to change the clerk from an appointed, from an elected position to an appointed position.
Hey, Jack, one second.
Yep.
Could we go back to the roads?
Yep.
Meeting House Road, does that mean that?
I believe that's just.
Some terms.
I think we're just talking about the stub down by Kinney Pond.
So, this still remains an open issue with Stop and Shop or whoever the?
No, I think, no, I think we're past that. The issue is getting that paved and we're, right now, we're waiting for, just, we're waiting for Mr. Marini to get the lights moved so that we can get all of that underground work done and then pave Meeting House Road, and then once we have the funds available now, once we get that paved, then we'll be able to accept that road.
But how about the rest of it here, you know, which was still in dispute, correct, with Stop and Shop in terms of the outstanding bond and the work that?
No, I think, I think, I think we've resolved.
It did come up recent, but I lost track of it after it came up. We had some conversations.
Let me go through all the notes and.
Yeah, maybe they, maybe they did bring it to.
Because I think, I mean, we've gotten, we got the money for the septic that they owed us, and they gave us the money to pave the Meeting House Road, so I think I'll have to, I'll have to look with Bob to see what is accepted and what isn't accepted, so I can give you, I can put that all together with Bob and, but this, I believe this intention is just the part that was under the Kinney Pond subdivision.
Gotcha.
Again, town clerk appointed, town clerk is looking for a bylaw that requires everybody to have meeting minutes filed with her, with the clerk, I should say. This needs to be, obviously, well, a lot of these need to be still wordsmithed, but the one from the Municipal Housing Trust is to, is to make a change to the zoning bylaws which would allow, I guess it's, actually, I think it's the zoning bylaws, it might be the general bylaws, but allow developers to, rather than their inclusionary bylaw that allows them to build an affordable house within their subdivision, to actually make a cash payment instead of that. That was brought forward by the Municipal Housing Trust. We've got a citizen's petition to accept the stretch code. Now, this is where we get into the fun ones, this is the ones that, well, Mr. DeLuca is going to draft one that prevents the sale of recreational marijuana in the town of Norfolk. And then talked about, and this kind of goes along with that other agenda item, please consider updates on the housing production plan and discussions of options for reaching our housing goals. You know, we've, we've kicked around the Old Town Hall a lot, what to do with that. You know, we've got a plan from an engineer, not GLM, one of the, one of the engineers that would subdivide the Old Town Hall property, just the building itself and then some of the land to the right of it. If you remember, we had that plan before us a couple of years ago. I just think we need to decide whether or not, if we want to have that go to the planning board and have that cut off from, so we keep the parking lot and the access to the Old Town Pond, or Old Town Pond, Town Pond.
Well, it's old now.
Yeah, I guess it is an old pond. I guess the question is, do we want to, because we figured out after early discussions, we can't tear it down without, unless, because that'll mess up the.
Grandfather.
Grandfather. So, unless somebody has a brighter idea, thought is to carve that off and then sell it, and I put on here that we could either sell it for affordable housing or commercial use, you could pick one or the other, or, or just sell it.
What do you mean for, I mean, oh, I mean.
Well, it's in, it's technically, I think it's in the B1 district, so it could be a commercial, it could be a lawyer's office or a dental office or.
Would that get a higher value, or would it be making more value?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it would.
Yeah, get higher tax revenue, anyway.
It depends, but if you wanted to just, but if you wanted to put a affordable housing restriction on it and sell it so that a developer or the Municipal Housing Trust, you know, could work with a nonprofit to build affordable housing, that's, you know, that's just another option you can go to. It would limit the amount of money we would get back from.
I have been told through this, by the consultant, that the Board of Selectmen have the ability to transfer town property over to the Municipal Trust for the purposes of building affordable housing.
Yeah, and does that, we were debating that, actually, because if you look at the bottom one, we were, we were talking about, and so I haven't talked about that with Dave DeLuca, whether or not there needs to be a town meeting warrant to authorize the selectmen to do that, but, because you think, yeah, you, Jen.
This is what she said. I was, I did not know this.
Maybe we like one town meeting?
Yeah, that if we, that if you have a municipal housing trust, she said that, and apparently, a lot of towns have done this, that rather than auctioning it off and running the risk of who may or may not, you know, do what you want them to do, she said towns have the ability to transfer without any town vote to the Municipal Housing Trust, a piece of property for the sole purpose of developing affordable housing, which was news to me.
For state.
I did not know that.
Well, let's just confirm that, because it seems too easy.
But she said it, well, that's kind of what I thought, but she said it's done a lot, and I said, are you absolutely sure? She said she's absolutely sure, so.
And, because I mean, you know, I don't want to get people crazy, but wouldn't then, you know, if you were to do it like that piece of property, could you make it just affordable apartments, you know, maybe just make an apartment, I don't want to say complex, but, you know, two-story, three-story.
Whatever you can set on the property, they could, sure.
All hundred percent, or even if you did some marker, it doesn't, would it have to be a hundred percent affordable in there? It still wouldn't be a bad thing.
It's a small piece of property.
If you did a three-story, you could get 25 apartments in there, couldn't you?
What?
You know, apartment, you know, like a little apartment.
You can't go back that, you can't go very deep, so I don't, I'm thinking you can look at.
Just two stories.
I mean, think of it as what's there.
Yeah, you wouldn't go three stories.
I mean, that's probably the easiest way to think of it, I mean.
Two stories in?
Yeah, two stories.
Ten apartments.
If you're a non-builder, I'm thinking like four apartments.
Yeah, oh, four apartments, that kind, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
I mean, I think that's probably the best you could do.
I mean, that sounds interesting.
For a town that has no rental property.
Right.
That sounds.
Affordable renting would be nice, right?
Yeah, and then we get to count all four. The other, the other thing I was just wondering is, would it, you know, part of this housing production plan is trying to identify opportunities that the town can manage, you know, that we could control in terms of developing residential areas, and, you know, I mean, Southwood's clearly one, but we're not going to buy Southwood, but the one that just jumps off the page to me is this one up here, Stop and Shop. And would it, would it be worth, I mean, that is a perfect location.
It's in the center of town, it was about your wife.
I mean, would it be worth going back to Stop and Shop and seeing whether or not they would entertain selling that property to us exclusively for the purposes of developing residential?
Well, does it hurt to ask, is it for sale anyways?
It is, but, but, you know, they got all kinds of.
Right, this one wouldn't be a covenant, I doubt that covers, I assume they're just trying to protect it above supermarket, I could be wrong.
But, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe we could strike a deal, I mean, I mean, it's perfect, Jack. It connects to the existing complex that's up on top of the hill, it's perfect location.
Would it be a hundred percent affordable, is that what you want?
Not, well, no, if you, if you did a combination of both, you know, market rate and, and, well, I mean, if you do apartments and 25% of them are affordable, you count them all.
That's what I mean, I mean, not that we'd, anyone wants.
So, I don't know what you'd put there, I'm just thinking of, when you look at this plan and you look at where we might have the opportunity to manage the process, because there's going to be a new census coming out in 2020, and that number 321 is going to change, and I don't know what it's going to be, but it's going to be more than 321. So, even if, if we were to, you know, hit safe harbor next year, that number's going to change in three years.
I mean, it's a bold idea, because it's one thing to talk about affordable housing, it's another thing, you know, to say that we have an appetite to develop, you know, property beyond.
Well, really, just, I look at it as like, so they abide.
But I, I understand, I understand the point.
There are towns that have done this.
Maybe you need some new thinking on some of this stuff because of what we're dealing with, with the 40B onslaught, maybe.
I can actually, I've got the information on it, I'm trying to remember, I don't want to tell you the wrong town, but there are several towns that have done this, that have actually gone out and purchased pieces of property and contracted, and I'm using my choice of words here, there's probably another way to say it, to develop housing.
Well, mayfield tried to raise that money, they put together some.
It continues to be town-owned?
Yeah, town-owned, yeah, town-owned. It's, it's just.
Well, it's just like a city, I mean, when it ends, the city owns, Boston owns, town that has city-owned property, right?
I don't know what Stop and Shop would or wouldn't consider that, but, I mean, that's an out for them that takes any future commercial considerations off the table as far as they're concerned, and, you know, if we could get a good, get a good deal, that is a perfect location.
I was just like, if they listen to the meeting, why would they give, I don't, one is they don't want any commercial.
Why would they not?
Well, no, they don't want any commercial, they've been sitting there for all these years, I assume they want, besides the fact that they won't really rent anywhere that thinks about doing a supermarket, I assume they want top dollar. I have no idea, what is the, is there a current asking price for that?
As I've heard, it's expensive per square foot, and it's, you know.
So, I mean, it doesn't have to ask, I mean, who, I don't know who deals with Stop and Shop, you've met with them before, I don't know.
I've met with them before, but it's always been around the supermarket concept. I'm just saying, if we approached them, what's the harm? All I can do is say no.
I'm fine with that, I mean.
Or they can give us a ridiculous price that just is.
Does it make it economically feasible, right?
Sure, yeah.
Because they may not think we're serious, or whatever, I mean, I think they just don't care, I mean, because it says it's a small price to pay.
And I'm not talking about the front piece, which isn't owned by Stop and Shop anymore, I'm talking about the piece down back by the, in front of Meeting House Road.
Right. Why not, yeah, I might as well ask, who's going to do the, who'd do the asking?
I would give my cautious support, yeah, I'm a little bit apprehensive about it, but I understand it, and, and, you know.
Well, I think it just starts with what they want.
This is an exploratory conversation.
Good, thank you.
Because I, it's just that, when you read the plan and you look at the different approaches that other communities have used, this one just jumps off the page, and that just, to me, strikes me as an ideal opportunity to, of all the land that we have around here that is not obtrusive, you know, it doesn't, it's part of an existing complex for all intents and purposes, right next to the railroad station, I mean, it's, it's perfect.
I mean, if I play the devil's advocate, you know, there's the argument that you have market forces which would suggest that the land would naturally, you know, go through this process, evolution, development, what have you, but it hasn't, and the question is, why hasn't it? If, you know, we're talking about doing something which is really no different than what a developer could do, the question is, why hasn't it? And why, you know, and is it because that Stop and Shop would consider doing something with the town, working collaboratively, where they would not be inclined to work with a private developer, you know, selling the land for private development? I mean, aside from the fact that there can't be a grocery store there, right, in terms of, you know, whatever covenants in the land deal is my understanding, if they were to sell it, aside from that aspect of it, you know, why wouldn't market forces just dictate and it be developed in the same way that, you know, we would want to develop it?
Well, it's just worth asking, right? So, is it not, is it not currently zoned, can it be residential now? I assume it can be, right? Or maybe not?
Well, actually.
It'd be mixed use.
Right, we'd have to, we'd have to, we screwed that up, if you may recall, we.
Has to be mixed use then?
There was a petition that came forward that inadvertently changed one of our existing bylaws that we didn't realize. At one time, it could have been residential only, but now it has to be mixed use, but we could bring forward a bylaw to change that.
Right, so that's probably one reason you have to.
Okay.
You, you develop, had just made it a slam dunk, because you're right, it's a slam dunk if it was residential zone right now, just like they're killing us with all these other developments, you know, because who would want to live in a, like, you know, city, you know, town center apartment complex or housing complex, just like, you know, 1061A, I think because it's probably, can't be right now a hundred percent residential, why, why it hasn't, someone has a call to Stop and Shop, so listen, I'll give you five million bucks for this property, because I can put up.
Here, if, 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 let's just go the other way for a second, and let's just say they entertained it, and let's just say they, they gave a viable consideration that made it practical for us to consider this. In terms of, of the housing component of this, you know, that 10% is a moving target, and, and it's going to continue to be on our back until we take care of it.
Right, right.
And it's a 10-year cycle, because it's going to be in the 20, 20. If you, if, and this is what happened in one of the other communities, by purchasing that, by purchasing a piece of land and establishing with DCHD, I think I said that correctly, they had a plan, and they had a certified plan, they had a process in place, and we've identified, you'll see in the plan, as one of the strategies is to identify parcels of land that the town could purchase to, for the purposes of developing residential housing that qualifies under, you know, for the 10%. You'll see that in the plan that you're going to get, it's in there, because it's one of the options you want to have.
But doesn't it require an application in order to be counted?
We're not talking about a 40B. We're not talking about the town going in the 40B business, we're talking about the town developing their own residential community. You, it doesn't have to be a 40B to count.
No, it's just affordable.
No, affordable.
It just has to be affordable.
But doesn't it, so you saying that just to have a plan without having a bona fide application for a development?
The plan is.
No, just identify targets, say Jada Pauls might be a target.
This is, you'll see in the plan, a list of strategies that the town could employ. It's not a requirement, it's not a you gotta do it, it's just a list. This is one of those strategies that will be in there, and when we were talking about this, I asked her, I said, has anybody done this? And she cited a number of towns that have done this, and how it worked to their advantage, and in fact, she was talking about the 2010 census, where it was changed about how a town proactively went out, filed with them to build this, and they spent five years building the darn thing, and they were protected against all 40Bs for that period of time because of the filing.
But there has to be a filing.
Oh, well, they have to, they have to.
You own the land and this is.
But it's not a 40B filing.
No, right, right, okay. Okay, and she could talk about this Thursday night?
I'm sure she could, yeah. Certainly she can talk about it when our two, when the two boards are together.
Okay.
But it just, it was such an intriguing strategy, and the more we got into it and did some research on it, and then this piece of property just came to my mind, I thought, well, it's, it's at least worth the conversation.
I mean, properties are popular of everywhere, I mean, that's, I mean, if you read the Facebook, that's what people, the residents try to band together, everyone wants to chip in 2,000 bucks and buy up some of these properties to prevent that.
And I don't blame them, I don't blame them at all.
Calum Carey's house is up now, right? And the, the, the real estate guy's pushing it literally as a 40B project, he's like, buy it now, it can be 40B, because it's got seven acres.
Well, you know, the, the good news is, is we're now in a position where we can delay 40Bs.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, I mean, it's always been a strategy, just like.
But you can only delay them, until you get to the 10%, you're only delaying, there's nothing that protects you until you get to 10%. So, the more we can wrap around this housing production plan, a meaningful strategy that keeps us at that 10%, because it's going to be a moving target, we got to think beyond 2020, we've got to, and this is the type of thinking we have to invoke into this plan.
So, in that scenario, potentially affordable with age restriction, things like that?
Nothing wrong with that.
Either way, whatever, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Which is going to be in demand in this town.
It's kind of like the senior park, I don't know whether it's going to be checkers or chess, but, but, you know, the first place is to think, well, are there any spots of land? If you don't have land, then the rest of the conversation is a waste of time.
How much land is that, Jack, how much land is it, is it five acres, about five or six acres?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and when you think about perfect spots that are not intrusive on neighbors.
Right.
Doesn't get any better than that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Except for Southwood, which we don't control, because it's owned by the Archdiocese, and they're going to do something else with it, for sure, and we don't want to get into Southwood because of.
I mean, with, with an aging population, I mean, the convenience of having, you know, residents close to the center of a town, you know, it's very attractive.
The most astounding piece of data that I've gotten out of this plan so far was just that. There is a surprisingly, and she'll speak to it when she comes to our boys, but there's a surprisingly large percentage of seniors, single household, over the age of 65, living in Norfolk, that have probably lived here all their lives, that are struggling.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, I remember that.
To maintain their home, and they have no place to go, nowhere to go.
Yep.
And, and that is one of the reasons I started thinking about that, is, you know, if we had apartments, and they, a lot of single-family folks that are getting in their late 70s, 80s, you know, they can't maintain a home.
And they might not want to.
Don't want to maintain a home, maybe another way to say it, that's probably a better way to say it.
For both, right? You don't want, done it 80 years.
But they want to stay, they want to stay where they've lived their whole life.
Granches might be here, whatever.
There's nowhere to go.
Right.
There's nowhere to go in this town, and, and.
It's the same in a lot of, every small town.
And that, it is, you're right, but.
Big halls, and, yeah, other maybe, rent their plainbills of apartments, every, every small farm.
But this location, center town, right by the train stop, I mean, you know, you do have a Walgreens, you know, you've got your pharmacy, you can get basic staples, perfect, it's perfect.
Yep.
Yep.
So, Jack, you're looking into our article about maybe on the Old Town Hall, see if they can be, you know, granted over to.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather have the money, honestly, I mean, if we, I'm not suggesting we give it away, but I was surprised to learn that, I didn't know that you could do that. But we got to do something with Old Town Hall, I don't, if you, anybody has a stroke of brilliance.
There's no, there's no easy plan, so you might as well take the cat.
Cole really is anxious to start putting some big X's on it, you know, that the.
Condemn it?
Yeah, so that, you know, fire, fire departments, whether it's our guys or, you know.
He wants to burn it, is that what you're telling me?
No, he just doesn't want anybody to try and, if there's a, is there a fire there and.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid responds, they don't want them to go into the building.
Ah.
So, that's, you know, because it's, it's getting more and more unsafe, so.
So, Jim, you saying you'd rather sell it rather than pass it?
Well, only if I could get an ironlock deal where I could get the same results, you know, and end up with four apartments, or whatever it might be, and I could get 200,000 versus giving it to Municipal Housing Trust, but the issue is, who, who do you want the money to go to? Because if the Municipal Housing Trust does that, one, if it's rental, they get the income, or if they in turn sell it, you know, as condos or however, somebody's going to get the revenue. The question is, do you want it to go to the town, or do you want it to go to Municipal Housing Trust?
I think about the town people.
And, you know, either way, seeing as I'm on both, I'm happy either way. If it goes to the trust, then that's money that we can use to purchase another home.
Yeah, right.
So, it sort of increases our opportunities, because we're looking for ways of revenue sources, because CPC's been very generous, but, you know, they're, well, they're not running out, but they, they don't have the, you know, wealth of funds that they've had in the past.
So, if we were to sell it, we would want to get a evaluation if it was for a purpose, a particular purpose, whether it's four bedrooms or what, four units or whatever the case, whatever the vision is, we have to find out what the value.
Well, you can put a minimum price on it, I believe.
I mean, are you both talking about affordable housing, or are you talking about?
If the town were to sell it for purposes of affordable housing, you could put a.
Well, we could put a minimum when we auction it off, or.
You got to hit a threshold.
For, yeah, you could put a minimum on, but you could get, I think you're asking, could we would get an, we could either get an appraisal, or we could rely upon the assessor's data. Appraisal, obviously, would be fresher.
Yeah, but isn't it in the context of a vision that says, here's what the town wants, if you buy the land, understand this, you know, you're agreeing to.
If you did sell it, you can frame what the purpose of the sale would be, can you not?
Yeah, I mean, we could put a deed restriction on, we could record a deed restriction on the property now that says it can only be used for affordable housing, if that's what you're.
Or how many units or whatever the vision is, is what I'm saying.
If there was no restriction, the property's worth 500,000. With a deed restriction saying it has to be affordable, it's worth 250, that's, I think.
A deed restriction or how many units or whatever it is that we want.
I don't know that we could do that. I think you can only require it to be affordable. I, I don't know that we could, if it were sold to a private contractor, I, I don't.
I mean, well, I think, I think towns, and I, and again, this is more hearsay than anything else, I think towns have put out like RFPs saying, you know, looking for somebody to buy this property with a, with a purpose.
Fox would just do that. Fox wanted to sell the little fire station.
Four, four will housing units.
And someone might not do it. Fox went through that trouble.
So I'm not sure of all the legal, legal hoops you have to go through to get there, but I've, but that.
So I'd be interested in doing that, if we can figure out how to move that process forward. I, I would support that.
So to sell it for affordable housing, purpose to be constructed by somebody else?
In a vision that we agree, agree, and I'm not sure, the Affordable Housing Trust or whatever, you know, if they.
What do you mean by, I mean, it's up to.
Part of that vision in terms.
What do you mean by, how, how controlling it would get? What do you mean by vision? We, all, we tell the guy, Jeff, you buy it from me, 250,000, I want you to make affordable housing. Then he has to follow zoning laws. I don't care if you think in zoning law says you can get six in there versus I, my vision only wants five?
That might be okay. I just, I just not close enough to it to say whether or not.
I don't want to be too controlling, or then I'm like.
Yeah, I would just think we would over, I wouldn't want to overcomplicate it, because we won't have thought of something, and so I, my humble opinion would be. Yeah, put a, put a, it only can be used for affordable housing, let them try and maximize the use of the property. I mean, obviously, they're going to try and create as many.
Laws, you know, um.
Yeah, as, as long as we end up with.
All that stuff, does the building look nice, it's at the right.
As long as we end up with something that helps us, that's all.
You're going to want to try and push as many units as possible.
Yeah, as long as it's done right, I think I agree with Jim, you know, to take it off the plates of the volunteers, I mean, this, you know, to have somebody that, it's their job full time, that's what they do, they develop property and.
Well, good discussion.
So if we jump to the last one, because the last one's pretty much the same discussion, is, is, that's the Fort Pine Road, that's the house we took by tax title. We can either, we can either auction that off today, just auction off the property like we, we have in the past, or we can transfer it to the Board of Selectmen, and again, I'm at.
Into the housing or Board of Selectmen?
More, I'm sorry, to the Municipal Housing Trust.
Thank you, I have a house, but thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, can you check as to whether or not you need the town vote to do that?
Yep, yep.
Because according to her, you don't need to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with being on the town meeting anyway, but, you know, you talk about not complicating, and if you have the, if that's something we want to do, and if you have the ability to do it, we should do it. As long as it's legal.
Yeah, so do we want to, but, so the question is, do we want to try and maximize the amount of money by auctioning it off without a restriction on it?
Right.
Or do we want? I mean, I think realistically.
What is the, I don't know anything about this property.
That's a tough lot.
Where's, where's, where is it? What is it? What's the, what's the current value of it?
Go around Mira Lake, it's with little beaches, you take a right, and it's, it's right, it's right there.
It's small.
It's very, very postage stamp sized lot. It's very small.
What's the current? I know it's rundown, what is the current?
Assessed value is, I, I.
It's rough, I mean, 200,000, 300,000?
Definitely not more than 200,000.
Okay.
So what, what's there now?
There's a house that needs to be torn down.
So there's a septic system of some kind?
There's a septic system, and there's, and there's another, there's another very small town owned lot that we're combining the two lots together, but, but even with that, they used to park their cars on the town owned property, so that was a constant battle for us. And, and the neighbors, it was a frustrating situation. So we want to combine them so that somebody can build a house that makes sense, you know, they'll have to go through planning and all that. So the question is, do we want to? Do we want, if, if we want to just auction it off, you know, and have somebody build a market rate house, you know, or have that option to build a market rate house, we can just, we can authorize that, you guys can authorize the treasurer to go do that.
Without going to.
Without doing anything else, without going to town meeting or anything else.
I still think we ought to build a affordable stock. I know we're giving up some.
If we want to do, yeah, if we want to.
I think we're giving up some, it's my opinion, I think we're giving up some upside in the sense that for market rate house, but it's talked about to be that big anyways. And then we get one more, as Jim said, it's only going to get worse for us, you know, for how many affordable housing we're going to continue to keep needing when new census come out. I mean, one more, you know, putting one more.
What we had originally talked about with this property, and it, and it, as we thought about it more and more internally, was that we would put an affordable housing restriction on, on it, and then, and then auction it off. But that, that doesn't really, the market, the, the numbers don't really work very well, because they're going to have to tear down a house and build a house and still sell it as a market, as an affordable house, so it's, so either, so that's why we kind of scrapped that plan, and, and we either need to work with the Municipal Housing Trust, who would probably work with a nonprofit to build it. Or, you know, we almost give it away to a developer with a, with a.
Yeah, see, I, I think there are only two options, are you sell it to a developer and let him do whatever he wants?
Yep.
I, I think to put a restriction on it makes it just a nonstarter for a developer.
Right.
If, if, because it's just too small.
Yeah.
But, but they might buy it to build, because it is near the water.
Yeah.
You know, so it could be, you could, for a market rate place, they could get something out of that.
Yeah.
But for affordable, they couldn't.
Right.
So to me, the other alternative is if you can legally give it to the Municipal Housing Trust, and we could work with, you know, whether it's the helping hand from Franklin or whomever, that has the ability to tear it down and build and do it at a very reasonable cost, that we could get our money back by selling it, it becomes almost a wash. Those are the only two alternatives to me that work for a place that small.
So, Jack, where this is a taking, there was no Title V inspection?
No.
Because that could be a big question mark in terms of whether or not, you know, that system passes, and what needs to be done, and how much land there is, and what variances are going to be needed, I mean.
It's an old house, I'm sure it's not going to pass, because they have to get the.
If you're looking for money.
You know, you, we, I don't know whether it's better to go down the road and at least be knowledgeable in terms of, you know, the septic situation, or, I mean, if, if this is going to be redeveloped in any significant way, I got to believe that they're going to have to put an entirely new system there.
Yeah, I, I almost, this is what I almost think is better, selling it, auctioning it off and let, make it market rate.
I mean, they could put in one of these Crosby systems, it's been a while since I was on the Board of Health, but, you know, you can kind of, kind of save some of the.
Yeah, I think down in that area, there are some tight tank systems.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know the state of the art today, but there's some, some alternatives to the standard trench design.
Okay.
So could you, could you maybe expand that to allow both options?
We don't have, if we want to sell, we don't have.
We're actually not from market rate.
We do talk.
I can just remote this.
We can do, because that's right, it's tax title.
Okay.
What do you got? What's the point? I mean, I, I'm tending now, I haven't seen the lot, I don't know if.
I have seen it, it's, it's.
I mean, you know, just take the cash and get out, you know, just take the money.
I'm, I'm almost thinking that's the best deal.
You know.
I just don't see how we could.
You know, try to get municipal house to tear it down, and find out they need to do some complicated work to get a septic in there. And therefore, even with the generous help of helping hands, I mean, it's, it's almost like municipal housing couldn't recoup their money, even break even.
The, the best you're going to get out of that is a two bedroom, on a good day. That's the best you're going to get out of that. In fact, I think the septic's going to limit it to that. So, you know, two bedroom, what we would sell it for, versus what it would cost us to build based on the two that we've done, we'd lose money.
Yeah, it's like a four room house now.
Yeah, we would lose, we would lose money.
I mean, how much are we going to get then in auction either, what's the developer going to pay us?
Yeah, but.
50,000, no, it's free money.
Whatever we got, it's more than we got now.
We have to get our tax money back. How much we owe, do you know, Jack, what we have to pay?
Can't be a lot.
Um, how much do we owe?
No, how much do we owe, because we have to get, we have to pay the town back of the taxes that were, that's why we took it. Whatever, you don't have to.
70,000, I think.
Oh, it's 70,000 taxes. Is it even going to get 70,000? I don't know how it's going to even get 70,000.
I don't know.
Right, you know what I mean, for a two bedroom.
We're not going to get anything having it sit there.
But we, but we get to lower our, our liability, so.
No, I, I'm not saying it, I'm against it. So, all right, I'll take a motion if, if you guys, you know, to sell it.
Oh, so you want to just do the other, oh.
All right, let's just get this off, you know.
Okay.
Anyone want to sell tomorrow?
Uh, I'll second that.
All's in favor of, you know, tax that also? Say aye.
Aye. So take this off.
Yeah, okay. So just as a, along with that, so we'll come back to, because there are going to be some other properties, but they're all just, there's no houses, so there's some other, and they're all just properties that hopefully a neighbor will, will want to buy the property. So Sue's going to put together a, a letter that'll go out to all the, the butters, you know, trying to, like a sales pitch, encouraging them, but we'll come back to you with that whole list of items before the, obviously before the auction is finalized. So that if we back up now, go work our way from the bottom, now the last article there is, so you know that piece of property on the corner of Main and Seccong, it's 2 Seccong Street, it's Sullivan's Corner.
House sale.
House is reselling. I've talked to the Realtor a couple times, it's still, it's been under agreement, but, but she's very skeptical that, that the people that they've, it's in and out of agreement with now, she's very skeptical that it's going to.
What's it on the market?
Close.
200 or 300?
It's been under agreement for 172. It was actually 177, but there was, she said there was like $5,000 of give backs.
You're, you're thinking of our purchasing it for what purpose?
I'm thinking of it just to improve that intersection, because.
Tearing it down.
Tearing, tearing the house down, and including some, doing whatever we can to improve the sightlines at that intersection.
If the house is gone, you've improved the sightline.
Yeah. I mean, we had another three car accident there the other day, so.
Really did?
Yeah, it's one of the worst intersections in town.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah.
Yep, I agree with that.
Um, Bob, you know, if we can do it, kind of tastefully, you know, would love to just have a place to, a little shed there to, to, you know, off, obviously, off the road, to put lawn mowers and stuff, to maintain the cemetery. Obviously, we'd do something that would fit in with the budding houses, I mean, we're not trying to, we're not trying to put a DPW shed, you know, monster shed.
We'll be emailing now, but I know what you're getting, that makes, that makes it just a sense if it's.
Yeah, again, not, I'm, you know, and that's only, that's only if it's possible, the main purpose is to improve the sightlines, because that's just.
So we'd have to pay one, you're asking the town to pay at least 172?
Well, I think we can negotiate, I don't know, I'm not sure if 172.
Ours is a cash deal, I think you got to hold it.
No, I'm just kind of checking, so whatever price, and then we have to tear it down, remove all that stuff too, and I'll call here.
Yep.
All to improve size, which is very important, because we had three cars, and, I mean, because it can't fit, I know you love roundabout checks, I know you'd love to put a roundabout there, but it's not legally.
Um, I don't think the roundabout, if we had, if we had purchased one of the other properties, we, you know, if we were smart enough to get both sides.
I'm not taking on that, but, so by no four way stop signs, I mean, that wouldn't stop the accidents, doesn't have stops, people go through, and we had that in the center, so I don't know.
It's blind, it's a blind corner. When you're coming out Seccong, it's just a blind corner to the right.
If you're heading south on Seccong, going across Main Street, it's, yeah, it's very difficult with that house there.
Yep.
Uh, it's a little bit better heading north now, because the new house, we were able to help encourage them to push back those shrubs. Tried to put them right back on the, on the edge of the road, but made sure they didn't.
Yeah, no, I'm very familiar with that intersection.
I feel bad for getting accidents.
It's come by, well, Public Service Officers, drive safely.
It's coming on. Don't get in an accident there, but they do, I mean, please.
Easier said than done.
It is, I mean, I guess, I think it's what the chief explained, it's not people necessarily from town, because I've never had, I don't care which side I come out, well, I'm going, you know, from Seccong, not on Seccong, I've never had any issues, never had any near misses. But I live here, so I know what to expect by my job, the same way you come out Neatham Street too, by Stonyburg, and that's dangerous.
I guess there's probably at least three or four accidents there a year.
That is a tough intersection.
And people go fast.
Well, let's keep it on for now, I mean, you know, why not?
Let the people decide.
I mean, I can contact the Realtor and try and, try and make a contingent deal on town meeting approval, and, you know, I'm, anybody that wants to help.
Uh, it would, it would certainly be better for town meeting if we knew what it would cost.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I agree, and we'd be a cash buyer, we'd she was, she sounded like that deal was going to fall through, so.
So you're thinking like 150, Jack, or you're thinking?
Yeah.
So start at 125 and say we can.
I don't think it's, I think it's owned by, I don't, it's, it's owned by an, an agency now, so it's not, it's, it's, it's not owned by a private owner anymore.
I would start very low.
Yeah.
See where it goes.
Yeah, for the right price, it would make sense. It would make sense, it's a visible part of our town with the cemetery.
Cash buyer, closing 30 days.
Okay, so I'll keep that on, and we'll, we'll tweak that.
Call me.
And the last one, I left that one, because it's always my favorite one, it's just, again, I, I don't want to, I don't want to be the salesman, but I'm going to sound like a salesman, just, I think we should go through the process of creating a charter. And again, this is not about my job title.
You mean establishing a charter committee?
Whatever, kicking off the, I mean, there's a couple different ways you can start a charter, I, yeah, I'd like to establish a charter committee and have, have a group of, of people figure out what we, and it's not just about, it's not just about officers and people and how, how they report to each other, which is an important part of it, but it's also things, as we, you know, continue to learn things here. It's about, like, the other day, we had a problem with a discussion, I should say, about who signs off on the Council on Aging bills, you know, whether or not it's the Council on Aging Committee or the Director. The Council on Aging was happy to hand it over to the Director, so it wasn't like a power struggle.
It's just a matter of what's allowed, though, by, by law. It's just like recreation.
I had two very experienced, you could probably guess who they were, two very experienced municipal attorneys, with very different opinions about who, what the right answer was. So it would just be nice to have all those things.
Well, we should go with the one that works for us.
Yeah, I did.
Your, your attorney shopping, answer shopping. I'm not, again, you don't have to sell, Jack, you, you say you sell, unless these guys, but I have to, again, let the people decide, I don't have a problem with if people want to do, you know, people want to explore doing a town charter, I mean, it takes forever, so.
It's a couple of years.
It's a couple of year process.
It's, it's a couple of years.
Rent them finally get through it, I don't know if they love it or not.
I printed out all the Rentham.
We've done it here before.
Yeah, no, yeah, before I was really involved, so.
Yeah, we did in the 90s, and well, it resulted in your job, your original job, Finance Director.
Both my jobs, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, some of them go as far as former government, right, in terms of whether or not to change the form of government.
Yeah.
Thaddeus is going through that now, whether or not to be a representative of town meeting anymore, or go back to.
And that's one of the issues, it can be before the table, on the table, but then it has to go to town meeting for, you know, and they approve whatever sections they so choose, and it's like a shopping list.
Yeah.
You can approve two out of eight, or whatever you want.
So why not, yeah, I have no problem with that.
I think it'd be good. All right.
Sounds good.
That's all you got. So entertain a motion to close the law.
Uh, yeah, can I get a motion to close the town water?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm adjourned.
Uh, consider authorizing, I thought already did this, the hiring, funding, consulting for ZBA.
We haven't voted it.
I, I reached out to each of you to talk about the concept, but we haven't not, we have not discussed it at a meeting.
Do we have price, a dollar amount, are we funding, is it?
I do not. I, I believe the ballpark that the, the ZBA's attorney has given me is probably in the 6,000 to 8,000 dollar range, so we could fund that out of the Selectmen's budget, at least temporarily, and then.
We don't have a budget, you always say that, makes us look bad, do we have a Selectmen budget? Town budget maybe?
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, I know, I think we, I said, no, I don't mean to be mean.
You could fund it out of the advisory board.
No.
We definitely could fund it out of the advisory board.
Could fund it out of the advisory board. I, I will move to, uh, provide funding not to exceed $10,000 for the purposes of hiring a consultant to the benefit of the ZBA. For the purposes of benefiting the ZBA and its consultation on.
Yeah, this is due to the hydrology report, and talk about the cuts and fills.
On the, regarding the Abbeyville project.
Again, you don't have to, let's tell the people at home.
Is 10,000 enough?
I believe 10,000 would be enough.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just to point of discussion, you know, I thought I agreed with Scott, that we had some conversation about this, but maybe we didn't have a dollar amount, maybe it wasn't very prescriptive in terms of the support for this.
Well, I think you emailed each of us individually and asking what our opinion was, and, no, I answered, yes.
It's fine, and this is consistent with our conversations in previous meetings where we've discussed this, so I would second the motion.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then please consider opening discussion for the public comment period on water rates, including solid waste and cemetery rates for a period of 120 days.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get your comments in, please. Housing production plan, I mean, we talked, well, I don't have any specific capital items, other than what I've given you before, but housing production plan, Jim can speak to it more intelligently than I can, but it's, it's, it's moving right along, there's a meeting Thursday night.
Public meeting.
Public meeting.
Yep, and it's at the, is it HO Day, or is it the?
HL of Day.
It's at the HL of Day school.
Unfortunately, it is the night of the Freeman Kennedy Open House, but this.
Is it in the library, or?
Uh, no, it's in the cafeteria in the back.
Cafeteria in the back, okay.
So any of those people going to the Freeman Kennedy, it's unfortunate that they can't go to both, but this was scheduled back in May, so I, I mean, chances are, if we reschedule for another night, we'd.
We don't want to reschedule for another night. We, we, we need to, we need to follow the, the timeframe on this, because we need to get this in and certified.
Yep. Um, and so when is the, then the, in early October, is the joint meeting with the Planning Board?
October 10th. They're coming to our meeting, so we need to invite them.
I can invite them tomorrow.
To come to our meeting on the 10th for purposes of reviewing and hopefully approving the housing production plan.
Yeah, actually, Sue's already made that connection, but we'll just confirm.
And, and they will have, my understanding is that everybody will have advanced copies of, of that to review the week of the 25th.
Of September. So that way, no one, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, then, yeah, you're right, and earlier you said that on October 11th, we electronically submit it, and that's, that sets the clock for.
Right.
Having our protecting, you know, start to having our protection, once we get 16 units approved, after that, it would give us a year.
Yep. I mean, if, yeah, I mean, if we get, if, and the ZBA has got two specific projects that have not closed yet. That could very well, this could work out.
Okay. So ju- just to clarify, so, so Jim, Thursday night, and then again, in October?
Well, Thursday, Thursday night is, is a meeting being run by the consultant, and it's for the public.
Yeah.
It's a workshop.
Yeah.
They'll set broad open tables, she will make a presentation that is further developed than what we did in July. It's, it's further along, and she's looking for public input.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's not a debate on 40Bs. It's, it's a discussion on housing needs for the town of Norfolk. And then she'll take that input and put it into the project, into the plan, refine it, she'll give a draft to us, the Municipal Housing Trust. We have a meeting scheduled for somewhere on this calendar. Uh, it's, it's not a debate on forty Bs. It's, it's a discussion on housing needs for the town of Norfolk. Um, and then, she'll take that input and put it into the project, into the plan, refine it. She'll give a draft to us, the, the municipal housing trust. We have a meeting scheduled for somewhere on this calendar. Uh, no, that's the fourteenth. I think it's, I think it's, I believe it's the twenty-seventh. It's either the twenty-sixth or twenty-seven, but anyway, that's a housing trust meeting. We'll put our final stamp on that, and then it'll go out to you guys and the planning board, and then they're coming to our meeting on the tenth for the presentation.
Well, you can't have a housing trust meeting to put a final approval, or maybe you could, cause you said she's gonna get it to the week of the twenty-fifth.
But we're gonna, we're gonna see it before it goes to you.
Okay.
So, I, I think we're meeting, um, oh, there it is, it's Monday, the, uh, the twenty, twelve, yeah, it's the twenty-fifth we're meeting.
Okay.
If we're all happy at that point in time, if there's any refinements, you'll clean it up, it'll go to you the twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh, but it'll go to you that week.
Okay.
That's the plan.
And then we'll be prepared to approve it on the town.
Right. Yeah, and, and if, if we need to have any conversations with any individual planning board members, uh, you know, please be sure that the trust is, you know, a member of the trust will be more than happy to sit down with them individually and talk about it, cause it's very important that we all be as close to being on the same page on the tenth as we can, because that vote's critical. We need, we need to get that vote done, and we need to get that in.
Is it a vote, is it a, you know, we?
It's a majority vote of both boards.
Of, or, or the total of both boards, or separate boards?
Each board, each board has to vote independently. It's not a collective vote.
So it's, it's two of you and three of them.
That, we need two of us and three of them. Thank you, Jack.
Okay. You know, it was, yeah, I didn't know if it was all, you know, just add a, that's eight.
No, it's not, it's not five out of eight.
You know, like, if all five, for whatever reason, the planning board liked it, and all three of us didn't, which I don't see why we wouldn't, so no, it has to be the majority.
Then, then we lose.
Okay.
It doesn't get approved.
I like Jim's way better.
You're not gonna do that, are you?
I, you know, I haven't seen anything yet, but I'm open-minded, but I, I believe in protecting our town as best we can, cause, yes, I think it's, you know, I, she's doing great work from what I've heard and seen, so.
She's terrific. Uh, I mean, we, we.
Why don't we have housing?
I can tell you, we had no capability of doing this ourselves. Absolutely none. Uh, it's just, the, the requirements that the state has, you either know them or you don't.
Yeah, it's one of those, like.
You, you have to play.
You got the wrong team, they're like, oh, it's our.
It's like municipal accounting.
Yeah, you have to play the game. You gotta put the dominos where they want you to put the dominos. If you don't, you don't, it doesn't work.
So a quick update on the public safety projects?
Oh, yeah, so, yep.
So I can go home and eat dinner?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's fine.
You look hungry.
I am hungry. Hang, hangry at this point.
Angry, is it, my kids say.
Yeah, you're hangry.
Um, so, three projects, right? We've got the police station, then we got the MECC involved with that, and then, uh, fire station. Um, all, you know, I'm, I'm having a lot of fun, um, with those. Uh, some ups and downs. We've, we've placed, replaced the, uh, project manager, um, or I should say, the firm replaced the project manager. Um, so we have a new project manager in place, John Vollmorte, I believe is his name. Um, definitely John. And, uh, met him today, seems to be quickly getting up to speed. Uh, his boss, Al Calgano, um, has been filling in in the interim wonderfully and, uh, helping us get, get, uh.
Keep on track.
Keep on track. Um, we continue to have a few minor issues at the police station, ledge issues. Um, we had a, uh, kind of impromptu meeting down there today with, uh, some folks from the building department, and Mr. Hafner and myself. Um, and then we brought the plumbing inspector down because there was an issue, you know, trying to get, uh, just the, the, um, the trench dug into the, uh, from the road to the building. Uh, a lot of ledge getting hit there, so there was a lot of negotiations going on, um, trying to make sure that the plumbing inspector was satisfied, uh, sorry, the electrical inspector was satisfied. Um, so there's, in, we're encapsulating some, um, lines coming in, in concrete, um, just so that there's no danger of anybody digging into them. So, uh, that was one of the, kind of, handful of issues that we were dealing with today. There's a, there's another question going on in the back of the building, because the DPW has a lot of the site work responsibility. Um, so we get involved in this more than I would wish upon anybody else in the future. Um, but we need to do a trench in the back of the, along the back of the building, really the left side of the building, as you look at it from the road, the, so the back, meaning the long side of the road. Um, we've gotta put a trench in there to get to the, to the generators, which are in the back, um, and then bring that power back to the electrical room, which is in the, in the front of, the roadside of the building. Um, so the contractor's gonna do some digging tomorrow to make sure, to, to really determine if there is as much ledge as he thinks there is, so hopefully we'll get some good news on that tomorrow.
If there is ledge, then why, what's the big deal? Is it blaster, or is that not an option? I know it's possible.
Well, blasting's expensive, and plus you also have the foundation only a couple of feet away, so it's, uh, so you.
I mean, I thought though, I mean, the, the, you know, again, maybe, I don't know much about how they bid and what their responsibility is, it's by view, isn't it bidder beware? I mean, their responsibility.
But we, uh.
Did we say it was ledge-free? I mean, you know, unless, to me, it's his problem.
For a variety of different issues, the, you know, through the public, through the public safety building committee, at the recommendation of the architect and the OPM, we kept some, that's when I, when I started, that we kept some of the site work out of the general contractor's bid and left it in the responsibility of the DPW to try and save some money. So, you know, we're working, we have a group, you know, knock on wood, the relationship with the general contractor has been great so far, where, where he's working with us to make sure that we're not spending money, um, that we don't have to spend. So, he, you know, he's done, he's been able to do some of the site work for us, um, at time and materials, so he's done some exploratory work and, and kind of looked at the site work there. So the, you know, so it's, so, so the, to answer your question, would be on our dime rather than.
So we might, yeah, we tried to say maybe we might get caught a little bit, it might be, you know, there might be more ledge than we anticipated, and.
Yeah, so, but there are some other alternative solutions. Moving the generators to a different location is, could be a possibility. Moving the lines from the generators to the power room, um, either, you know, kind of attaching them to the side of the building, to the back of the building, again, so if you, you know, enclosed them, they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an sightly issue. Um, there's another discussion with the architect to, to just have the power lines come through the building, so there's, there's at least three different other options right now.
Just see what happens first.
Right, so let's just, again, this is just, uh.
This is called building a new building.
Building a new building, so it's fun. The other, the fire station, uh, oh, and, and the MECC, one of the things that the MECC is challenged with right now is that, and kind of the reason why we had a change in the project manager is, you know, they got some, let's just say they didn't get the best advice, um, to, for the tower, um, as far as procurement process. The process that they were, the MECC was going under, based on the OPM's recommendation, was to do it off the state bid list. Unfortunately, the state bid list doesn't allow you to, you still have to go out to bid, so they've got an unexpected delay here. So, we're trying to get that resolved. The MECC is working with their attorney to resolve that, um, but we're trying to get that resolved, because we don't wanna, we've already come up with a, a solution, so that we can put some, uh, conduit in from the, where the tower will be to the, through, to the power room at the, and the radio room at the, in the police station, up to the MECC, but just another, more of a headache than we were planning on having. Um, on the fire department, that's, you know, we've started doing, um, between Bob Bullock, Matt Hafner, and, and Cole, Chief Bushnell, um, they've been doing a lot of, kind of coordinating with, and obviously with Bob McGee as well, coordinating with a whole bunch of different vendors, working on the fire station land where the new bays will go. You've, I'm sure if you've driven down Main Street, you've seen that the trees are all clear. Um, we then went through a process where we stripped all the, uh, soil off of the, trying to get the, expose as much of the ledge there, uh, that we could. Um, and we're at the point now where we've gotta, uh, we're gonna go out to bid to have a, somebody come in and, and blast that ledge. Um, we're, you know.
Is it more than ledge? Cause we knew the ledge there, right, or?
We knew it was there. It's, you know, we, we had one early estimate that I, I think unfortunately is probably gonna be a little lower than we expected it to be, um, but until we actually get somebody on site, um, and go through the bid process and get the real bids, we won't know for sure. Um, again, that's, that's, the site, that site work is, we kept that out of the general contractors, well, we haven't bid that project yet, but, uh, the DPW's trying to, DPW along with the other departments are trying to get that done, so we can keep the cost down as low as possible and not have a general contractors over, you know.
Overhead.
Overhead built on top of it. So it's, it's all good, it's moving forward.
We have finalized the design.
We have finalized the design on the fire station.
Yep.
Which one did they go with? Drawing three, H, C?
Drawing C.
Is that the one they liked? I forgot, the one with the lock, the one that's, I like the.
Well, it has the training room.
Retained the bays.
Yeah, it retained the back bay.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, seems good, then, right, that's good.
Good. So it's going well. We hired, I think I, I've told you already, we hired an executive director at the, for the MECC, so he's, he's doing great. He's being paid from the state grant at this point. Um, he gets paid for about a year through the transition period, and then, uh, he'll be paid for out of the MECC's budget. Uh, he's a former Franklin dispatcher, with about twenty-five years of experience. He's a smart guy.
Yep.
Here we go.
Uh, well, you know, if, if, um, the certification that's into the state for our free cash comes through as anticipated, we're gonna have another good year like we did last year. So again, if that's the case, our compliments to, our, both our finance department and our departments for once again coming in under budgets, and revenues being a little higher than we anticipated, so it's a pattern that we like to see, so.
So it could change, it will change someday.
So, oh, which reminds me, would you guys cons, I mean, would you guys consider potentially an article, uh, to put a little bit more money, to be determined, uh, into the stabilization fund?
I'm open, exactly, you know, we're borrowing money, it's helped our bond rating.
We've got close to one point eight, I believe, in stabilization right now, one seven and change. Pretty sure.
Hmm, yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, well, we have.
Do you remember those numbers by the?
I think it's about one point seven and about four and a half in free cash, so altogether, it's around two point one to two point two. But in stabilization, it's one, seven and change, and, you know, the, I'd like to see if we can creep that up to the magic number of two.
You know, one of the reasons why, um, I think that's really important is because of the surprise every year with the formula with KP and not knowing, and, and that's, that's not a knock on anybody necessarily, it's more this formula that, um, it seems like, whether it's Rantham this year, Plainville next year, Norfolk, I mean, it seems like there's always a town that's getting a bad surprise, and so that stabilization fund is just, it looms larger than I ever thought. It would.
It's more than we've ever had right now, so.
And we, we, we may need it. We, we.
We may, but, but it, it certainly helped.
Not all of it.
It certainly helped reaffirm our bond rating with S and P, and as Jack said, it, you know, we've got a great bond rating for a town our size, but we're always trying to make it better, and, uh, the higher up we can get those reserves and, you know, keep our debt under control and not exceed what they consider to be a reasonable amount based on revenues, uh, we might get that notched up even higher, which always helps us on interest rates, so, um, and having now heard what some neighbors, you know, it's just, you know, we need to not allow, not allow ourselves to fall into that trap.
Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, I hope the KP budget, I mean, doesn't, it'd be nice if it just leveled off and, and everybody, you know, rose fairly based on population.
There is a meeting tomorrow night, I guess, just should mention that, yeah, I think. Um, it's, remember last year, we had a meeting of, of one selectman and one finance committee member, and we're having another one of those tomorrow night. So Jack and I are going, and is Todd, I guess Todd's gonna go too. Uh, Dave's no longer chair, so we don't have a chair in the finance committee, so I, I don't know who they, but at this stage, let them figure that out when they get back together, and, I mean, this is preliminary anyway, so, but we're having another one of those.
Where is it, is it?
Three-way conversations.
I mean, are we doing it in Plainville? Same place?
It's in Plainville, yeah.
You know, beyond, you know, process, good decisions, this type of thing, I mean, how much can that be, if not controlled, at least understood, in terms of what the implication, I mean, I just, I just got the feeling last year, unfortunately, it wasn't Norfolk in that situation, but that the number was just so, um, off the charts in terms of what Rantham and, to some extent, Plainville, I mean, I, I just.
If you're looking at the assessment number, that can't be controlled.
No, but, but what you, what you can.
Fixes them coming in with twelve percent budget.
Right, that's the, I think.
Right, and that's the purpose of the meeting that you're going to.
Right, the rest is out of our hands. We can't control that magic.
These are my three bullets, and, and, you know, I, I, we haven't had the meeting yet, so I don't know where the other two towns feel, but, but, you know, these forecasts should be, one, they don't have any strategic forecasting that I've ever seen. I've asked for it, no one, if it's there, they can't find it. So they should do one, two, and three-year financial forecasting. They, it's not hard to do.
Mm-hmm.
Second, they, they should be forecasting budgets that fit what they realistically think the towns can support, and, you know, if you look at what we do with the elementary school and what we've traditionally done, that's usually in the three to four percent range. So, you know, rather than building up here and, and starting World War Nine to get down here, that, they need to build a budget anticipating a three to four percent revenue stream. Now, if, if when that's said and done, there's some benefit that, that they can quantify, that says, you know, if you go to four and a half, we can do this much more.
Right, right.
They're doing it backwards. So, you know, and, and the other thing that, that they gotta do, in my opinion, i- is, they've gotta do, again, like what we did. We, we knew, in, in part of our budgeting process, Jack initiated a renegotiation of our health insurance.
Right.
He did it before the budget, you know, and, and we were all part of that, and, and so, they've gotta proactively look at their fixed costs and manage that process before the budget. What they did last year was they, they went in after the budget, which makes it three times harder, uh, and makes it an unrealistic front-end project. It's, it's just.
And created a lot of animosity.
A lot of animosity, with, not only the communities, but with the teachers.
Right, that's what I meant.
You know, it, it's just, the, the thought process there needs, they need to think it through a little bit better. Now, they've got a new finance director, um, he's on board, uh, he comes from, um, DY, down on the Cape, um, seems to, you know, his reputation is very good. I was part of the interview team. Um, you know, I think we've got a good candidate, good guy, so, um, that will help. Um, but it is the school committee, you know, the school committee is, you know, they're, they drive the train, and, um, I, we're hopeful that we can influence the group to think through those, at least from my perspective, and others may have other ideas that are equally or better, you know, whatever, there's no pride of authorship here, but it can't, we can't keep doing this, I, I mean.
Is this too much work? I mean, is this too frustrating, gets people too angry?
Emotions get too high, you know, it's ridiculous, and the kids are the ones that pay the penalty.
Yeah.
So we're hopeful we can influence the change in, in how they go about this process, and there is a group that's, uh, primarily driven by a lot of Norfolk folks, but all the community, I think they're representatives from, and some school representatives as well, they're doing the same thing, you know, on the public relations side, and they're involved in the budgets, and, and that's all good. We just gotta be sure we're all going, you know, if we've, we've got two boats rowing down the stream, we wanna be sure we're all heading in the same direction, that's all. So there's a lot of interest, a lot of activity around KP to hopefully help them, I think that's the right way to say it, to help them work through what are some significant issues.
But Scott, you bring up an interesting point, something we could talk about tomorrow night, is you actually could change the KP agreement, and if, and it may actually be a good year to do that.
Talking about going to his percentage of, of students?
Yeah.
I didn't know we had the option, I thought it was a state mandated thing, I didn't think.
Well, it used to be that way.
It's a, yeah, my understanding is, you could, you could now go back to the three towns and have a, if you.
Nightmare.
Nightmare.
Vote at the town meeting level, you can change the agreement and make it as simple as you want.
I would be all for it. It's the fairest way to do it.
And the other towns might too, because it, because it would take out the, the spikes.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about. I don't want that spike, actually, you know.
Well, it helped us this year, but it's hurt us others.
No, I want to be fair, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't wanna see the, you know, I don't wanna see, I mean, I don't know why the towns would be against.
It used to be, if, if you got thirty percent of the kids, you got thirty percent of the budget.
It used to, that's, I can, I was, I was, way, but, I always was told, you guys always say, you know, it's that formula even Jim can't understand, I thought we had no choice, that it's a wealth factor, it's this factor, I didn't think, I don't know why.
That was part of chapter seventy, you know, uh.
Modernization, didn't it?
No, no, not a wealth, like nineteen, well, the education reform back in.
Nineties, it was in the nineties.
Three or ninety-six.
Yep. I didn't know we could vote it back.
Would that take all three towns, or two?
All three.
Yeah, you'd take all three towns.
But I, I can't imagine they wouldn't. I, I mean.
It's just fair as a system.
It's a win-win.
Cause I, and I think now that the, you know, because the wealth factor and the, um.
We should talk about that tomorrow night.
Yeah, what's the other?
That's what you mean, it was some.
Oh, it's the, it's the assessed value, the equalization, and then it's the.
It's a wealth factor.
Medium income type thing.
Based on the, you know, two-year-old tax return information.
Right.
Yeah, so we, I think, I think the three towns are getting closer.
Yeah.
So I think it would be, to me, it would be fair, you know, obviously it would be, we're still paying the highest per student, so I have an agenda here as well, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, but the, but the process.
But I think we take out the spikes.
We could pay the highest per student, but we paid less in terms of the computation.
Right.
On a pro-rata, so, you know, it's.
It's only fair, I gotta believe, just cause they have the smallest population, why Plainville would be for it, so it's really just, if we're, we're on board, it's really just convincing Rantham.
Well, based on what happened to Rantham last year, they oughta be awful.
Except that they, again, I'm playing devil's advocate, you can ride this little guess curve and say, like I said, I feel like we got a bonus, like we only went up Bailey and, you could, you could take a chance.
But two years ago, or three years ago, I forget which.
We did get killed.
We got killed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. No, I'm just saying, Rantham got killed, if I'm them, just being, I don't wanna say spiteful, just say, cause they had the most kids there, right? I'd say, you know what, I don't wanna do that. I, I, we, we got hit last year. Come back to me next year, Jim Lee, and mention it, cause I, you know, I'm gonna ride the curb knowing that either you or Plainville are gonna get hit, and I'm not gonna, you know, it's not fair.
It's hard to argue the logic of just paying your share based on the number of students.
To me, it's common sense, I don't know why.
To me, that's what it always used to be.
We should definitely die without tomorrow night.
Um, yeah, we, we should talk about that.
So we wanna put on our town meeting, or?
Well, it'll be in the spring, I guess.
Be in the spring.
But that, that, I, I didn't, I, I guess I did know it. That, that's a great idea.
I mean, it's, it just makes no sense, but.
Well, it would certainly make it simpler. It would simplify the process.
It just scares the hell out of me, that budget every year now.
Yeah.
And I, you know, stabilization, we can't have enough money for stabilization, after what I saw happen last.
Then we know that, right, we kinda know what our percentage is gonna be.
Well, you know exactly what it is, yeah, yeah.
Then we just have to know what the budget.
There's no guesswork, there's no magic to the numbers.
We have to come up and go.
I mean, last year, we had to interpolate, we literally had to interpolate between the numbers to figure out what the heck this was gonna cost us. This year, that's a simpler process.
Okay, bring that up, please.
Please, and get it voted, get it passed, too, would you, right there?
So, two, in two thousand eight, there's my, I like to blame Dick Robot for this, two thousand eight, in, during the budget process, we also have those town administrator meetings with the superintendent, and, which end up always being meaningless, because, um.
You tell them we can't afford it, and they don't listen.
So we, we go in, we tell them we can afford three to five percent, and they say, so Dick Robot, who was the superintendent at the time, good friend, uh, walks in with two defibrillators, and puts them down on the table, and then hands us the budget, and they're twenty-three percent.
That's right, I gotta give him credit for asking.
The ironic part is, uh, seven months later is when I had my heart attack.
So he did cost.
So I do blame him for that, my heart attack.
He's like, how am I gonna go sell this to my selectmen for twenty-three percent? That just wipes out everybody a bit of money we had.
That was an ugly year, that was the, that was Rob and, Rob Garrity and Dick went at it at a selectmen's meeting.
Oh, I remember that vividly.